Time to sleep for now.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Board of Directors of the School District for the City of Allentown for today, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Prior to tonight's meeting on February twenty-fifth, an informational Board of Directors Retreat and Personnel Executive Session was held. The topics of the retreat included informational discussions on district initiatives, board governance, and a personnel discussion with the district's consultant on the hiring of and search for a regular superintendent. In addition, prior to tonight's special board meeting, an executive session was held to discuss the legal status of contract negotiations with the Allentown Education Association of the Century Promise Contract and the negotiated contract terms for the next superintendent. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comments at the beginning of the meeting is limited to agenda items only. If you choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to Deputy Superintendent Ramos. She's raising her hand there. I would ask that if you would like to speak tonight, that you fill out that comment card now so that we can make sure that we have everybody there. The comment cards are located at the podium near the door. Once you have been recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. We will now have roll call. Please call it.
Ms. Brown.
Present.
Ms. Conover.
Present.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Matheson.
Here.
Ms. Noelle Brown.
Here.
Ms. Ortiz.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Present.
Dr. Santana.
Here.
Ms. Wilt.
Here.
Nine members are present.
They stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I do have a few things to share with you as comments before we move on to the rest of the meeting. We are here tonight with one agenda item to elect a new superintendent of schools for the city of Allentown. The proposed salary, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, represents a competitive level of pay for the demands and complexity of the job in this district. Keep in mind that Allentown is a unique employer in the region and among the largest employers in the Lehigh Valley. The board has been tasked with hiring a chief executive for an organization that has nearly twenty-two hundred employees and serves more than sixteen thousand students and their families. As the fourth largest school district in Pennsylvania, the district is larger and more complex than others within the Commonwealth. However, the proposed salary of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would mean Dr. Burks still would not be among the ten highest paid superintendents in Pennsylvania. That's based on data from the state in twenty-one, twenty-two. The new superintendent of the School District of Philadelphia, Dr. Tony Waddington, currently makes three hundred and forty thousand dollars per year. Now Philadelphia is big. The new superintendent of the Pittsburgh Public Schools, Dr. Wayne Walters, earns two hundred and sixty thousand. Superintendents in a number of suburban districts in southeastern Pennsylvania, for example Downingtown, North Penn, Colonial, are paid more than two hundred and fifty thousand. In two thousand and twenty-one, the Reading School District hired Dr. Jennifer Murray at a salary of two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Dr. Murray had no prior experience as a superintendent, however, unlike Dr. Burks. Reading is a similarly sized district with comparable demographics. The proposed salary also is in line with similarly sized school districts in neighboring New Jersey. New Brunswick Public Schools pays their superintendent two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars plus. Patterson Public Schools with twenty-five thousand students pays two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, a little bit more than that. New Brunswick Public Schools with ten thousand students pays about two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Elizabeth Public Schools, twenty-eight thousand students, pays about two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Superintendents of districts like Allentown typically are hired within a regional or a national job market. As such, the salary we offer has to be competitive and tied to those facts. We are seeing a heightened level of turnover in the superintendenties nationwide. It's up forty-six percent between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty-two. This requires districts to make competitive office desirable candidates. We have an opportunity tonight to bring on a permanent superintendent we believe will be a transformational leader for ASD, the students we serve. We believe that Dr. Carol Burks has demonstrated, both on the job and working in our community, that she is the right fit for us. At this time, we are only taking public comments on agenda items. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. Call the first speaker, please. Do we have cards?
The first speaker is Don Ringer.
I just wanted to comment on this new superintendent proposed. I think two hundred and fifty thousand is way too much. I think should be a step salary. You don't just give a person two fifty off the start. I'm a business person, very successful at it, and I do not believe in bringing somebody in for that kind of money and just saying, here, you got four years. Okay, we're gonna give you a million dollars. I don't believe in it. This lady, I'm sure she's a nice lady, but she's had problems in other places. Okay, how do we know she can handle this? I mean, you guys have failed us, I think, six or seven times in this superintendent search. You failed us, the citizens of Allentown, you failed the students. Okay, and the number one reason, I hear a lot of people talk to me, they talk to me every day. The number one reason in Allentown people will not move in is because of your school district. That's the number one reason. Okay? And we've got to face that. We have got to face that. And they will not move in here if they have children. There is nobody that wants their children going to the Allentown School District. So how the heck are we supposed to have the confidence in you people that have failed seven times? All right, let's go another direction here. Thank you.
Victor Martinez.
So my name is Victor Martinez. I'm here representing the Allentown Education Latino Coalition. I want to make something really clear. We don't question Dr. Briggs' capabilities, resume, ability. We question the way you, the school board, have handled this hiring. The Allentown Latino Coalition of Education requested a meeting, sent a letter. The rest of the board was never informed of that meeting. The rest of the board never even got a letter to let them know that a representation of the Latino community wanted to be part of the process. Seventy-seven percent of the school population are Latino kids. And here you have a group of parents and Latino leaders wanting to be part of the process, wanting to talk to you about it. And you guys never heard or knew about it. It was done in secrecy. It was done outside of the school board meetings. And then I found out you guys didn't do a search, you didn't interview other candidates. I'm reading in the paper that you were told that, yeah, there's no need, really, there's no reason to be now doing a search because, you know, there's not really that many good quality candidates out there. Well, how do you know if you don't look for them? How do you know if you don't search for them? My day job is I'm the owner of the Spanish radio station, and I also host the morning show. I interviewed one of your colleagues, Phoebe Harris, on the radio show. She's, I believe, on Zoom. And she expressed the fact that she herself is sick and tired of the way you guys handle yourself behind the scenes in secrecy without including the community. So again, Dr. Briggs, I'm pretty sure she's qualified. I'm pretty sure she could do an excellent job. That's not what we are here for. We're here asking transparency. We're here asking that we, the community, are heard, that parents are included in your decision-making. And if at the end of the day she's a qualified candidate, no problem. But how can we know if you guys didn't even bother to ask anybody else or interview anybody else or search for anybody else? As he was stated before, you guys have failed us seven other times. So once again, we're here asking for transparency. We ask that this vote today is postponed so that a way you guys can have an opportunity to talk to members of the community and leaders of the community. Thank you very much.
Robert E. Smith, Jr.
My name is Robert E. Smith, Jr. I live at ten sixty East Gordon Street on the east side of Allentown. I'm here as a taxpayer tonight, and I'm very disappointed again. Dr. Burks, this is nothing personal against you. You seem like a very nice person. But here we go again. I heard the same thing when Dr. Stanford was here, that how great he was, and all of a sudden he disappeared, which we still haven't heard a reason why. And here we hear the same thing. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's more than the governor makes. So here we are, having, this is a tough district. Yes, it is. The governor has a tough district, too, the whole state. And you're gonna give a new person two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We need transparency. The interim never was hired right away. We never hired an interim like this. We also had community groups and the consultants consult. You don't have to listen to them. You don't have to listen to them. They get paid either way. And solicitors shouldn't be speaking for the board. They get paid either way. I spent sixteen years on the school board. And you know what consultants and solicitors all had in common? They don't live in Allentown like me do. We're the ones that get stuck with the pay bills when everybody leaves town. All the other superintendents, where are they now? They're not living here. For the last thirty years, I've been living here, and some people in this room have been living here. And the next thirty years will be here. But where will be your consultants and your solicitors and your superintendents? They won't be here thirty years from now. Our children, my children, I'll speak for myself, my grandchildren live in this town. And they want to stay here. But why should they when the taxes go up and you give these salaries, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? It's not right without transparency. And I express to the new members, we're not saying not pick this superintendent. We're saying take a pause for a month. Meet with the people, meet with the groups. This is so uncalled for, so uncalled for. Please take a pause. At least not listen to me, listen to the people of this city, our community. Thank you.
Lori Herzog.
Lori Herzog, and I'm from West End, Allentown. I'm here tonight. I feel two hundred and fifty thousand is too much to start out. You're gonna get two hundred and fifty thousand. I don't even have a contract. I've been working all through the pandemic. And now they're gonna start cutting jobs in my schools. So you're cutting jobs to pay your salary? And I don't have a contract. Food service has been fighting. The district was supposed to have a meeting with us on June sixth, twenty twenty-two. They canceled. We've been trying to meet with them, and here it is, twenty twenty-three. And we still haven't met with the school district. So I think before you get a contract, we should. Thank you.
Alta Gracia Mercado.
My name is Alta Gracia Mercado. I'm a resident, also a parent that raised three children in the Allentown School District, and also a grandmother that have an Allentown School District grandkid. Also, I'm part of the Allentown Latino Coalition Education group, and we're here about transparency. I'm very concerned about, from the time, I'm gonna read the points that I'm concerned, probably concerning. From the time you were, from the time, from the time I live in Allentown, it's been thirty-two years. The Latino population has grown, and the needs of the students and parents are not met by a system that has not worked in a consistent manner and has not included the community in making decisions that impact the education of all the students, as I have the opportunity of working for the community in those decisions in prior years. BSSA test scores show the poor levels of academic achievement of Latino students. This is something that happens again and again every year. This is the district doing, what is the district doing to change that outcome? We don't know because we, parents and the community at large, are kept totally disconnected from the district plans, if there is any. Most teachers who educate our children do not live in Allentown and do not look like their students they educate. They need to have culturally responsive training to be able to improve the academics outcomes of their students. Is the issue of culture and language addressed with the Allentown School District teachers and administrators? It seems that it's not. It has been almost two years that Allentown School District has not hired a director of ESL program in Allentown. The population has changed. Seventy percent of the student population is Latino. But practices in hiring teachers and educators that are diverse have not been a priority for the Allentown School Board. You must need to look at central office. You need to get your priorities for us in the community. The administrator and the school principals to see that it has never been a priority for them. That every student success, is a law, which is the main law for K to twelve public education. Has its main purpose to make sure public schools provide quality education for all students. This includes the achievement of historically diverse disadvantaged students who fall into one-four K groups. Students of property, students of color, students who receive special education services, and students that are who are English learners. Thank you.
Paz Simpson.
Good evening. My name is Paz Simpson. I'm in Allentown. Father of two in the school district. By the time my baby graduates from the school district, my granddaughter, who's autistic, will be entering the school district. I'll be here for another about eighteen more years, right? I hear all of the passion from everyone else, but I have, but none of these people are parents in the school district. Every time that we ask for someone to rehire a new superintendent, it puts our students back three years. So if we ask for this stop, this halt, this pause, all of these things that you're asking for as we reconsider on how to put our kids back another three years, that'll put us back way past a decade. Now, that'd mean that my ninth grader, by the time she graduates, would have never had sturdy leadership because we're worried about different things. Transparency is definitely something that we need. So I don't think it's an either-or thing. It's transparency and we keep Dr. Burks. And we keep Dr. Burks because she's here already, doing the job, doing the work. And we keep Dr. Burks because our kids can't afford for us to make another mistake and start back all over again. And where were all of these people months ago? I'm here every day. I'm in these streets. I'm the first person you call when there's any gang violence. I'm one of the first people you see every day. I've had conversations with Dr. Burks. I was probably the first person that was vocal about not hiring her because I didn't want to start all over again. And you're asking us to start all over again. How are you doing that and saying you're not doing harm to our babies? The most important thing needs to be our babies. The students that are in the school district currently. Fix that, stand by that, and then we can deal with other things. It's not an either-or thing. Is hire Dr. Burks and give transparency. Because I believe what Victor said, those things shouldn't have happened in the dark. I believe what the lady back there said, they need a contract. I believe that we need an ESL teacher. But how do you do any of those things without a leader? How do you do that without a leader? That's like asking the team to run the ship without a captain. Doesn't happen. I'm asking someone to stop, pay attention, and love. pay attention, and love our kids enough so that they can stop asking for this. Thank you.
Milagro Canales. Good evening. First, I want to say that this is a difficult task. And for those who don't know how hard it is for the school board directors, the long hours they put in, the amount of time they did, the investment in learning about the process, trying to figure out how to do this job is hard. I want to applaud you on that. I don't think you failed us. I think it's a hard job. And we're not always going to agree. And those of you that know me know that we don't always agree. But I am a parent of two kids in the Allentown School District, one special needs and one in regular ed. And two grandbabies in the Allentown School District. And I could tell you how difficult it is to start all over. And when they say where the parents at, I'm one of those parents that's been at the table. I've been at this podium, I've been in the streets, I've been in meetings. I know almost everybody in this room. Transparency is a good thing. We need that. But I, I'm one of those people that if I don't know the answer, I'm knocking on every door until I get it. And if I can't find the answer, somebody's going to give it to me because I don't leave the room until I have it. And I think that we need to stop blaming them for the questions that we didn't ask. So let's start asking those questions together. We have to work together. We can't do this alone. She can't do this job without us. Two hundred and fifty thousand is not enough really if you look at. We have a lot of problems. We have a lot of problems. We have a lot of problems. And somebody just told me, said, you don't, you don't, you don't owe me. Don't be rude. I'm not rude to you. Y'all need to learn how to be adults and start treating these people with respect. They got a hard job. And I want to thank you for taking the time to listen.
Pastor Haley. Evening, everybody. I'm Pastor Ben Haley from the Union Baptist Church, three oh two North Sixth Street, Allentown. I am a resident of the city, been a resident of the city for the past twenty years. Spend a lot of time in this room doing a lot of this. And I believe that it's time that the school district as a whole makes a turnaround. Paz Simpson made a great statement talking about the setbacks of hiring a new superintendent. At this point in time, Doc Burks been with us at least five months. She's been effective for the last five months. We're talking to everybody, but people we need to talk to, we need to talk to some students. We are always in our own circles of adulthood, trying to dictate what happens to our students. But they're the ones that are going to either suffer or be blessed by whoever sits in that chair. They're being blessed by Dr. Burks right now. I think that if we take time away from educating our students and have an empty chair in the leadership of this school district, we do our students a great disservice. Dr. Burks is ready, willing, able, and capable, and she is qualified for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And we need to stop acting. I heard three people talk about money. Are you more concerned about money or the education of your students? When we talk about market and the way the market is, we just heard the president, what the market is in New Jersey, in this area, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not a lot of money for a twenty-two hundred employee organization. I have a large organization of my own and I don't make two fifty. I wish I did. I need to make about five hundred. Anybody from Union here, y'all need to go back and talk about it. But I stand today to affirm that Dr. Burks is more than qualified for this job. Has been operating in the capacity long enough for us to know that she's qualified for this job. And I think that the time factor dictates that we elect Dr. Burks tonight and move our children's education forward. We got a lot of work to do in this community for everybody that stood up and talked. You know it, I know it. We've talked about it for years and we got problems with this district. But, but we need a leader who can lead us forward. And I think we need to elect that leader tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Jose Rivera. My name is Jose Rivera and like, I didn't agree when Ms. Burks got hired. I was so pro-Stanford and, but I gave her a chance. I believed in the process and I'm not a believer in ninety percent of this system. But I'm also against violence. And when I seen everything that was going on the past couple of days, flyers, social media. And I want our people to understand this. If this would have been a Latino woman, would you have been uproared or someone else would have tried to stop this process? Like, let's be honest about that right now. If this was a Latino woman, would you have been this passionate about removing her too? We cannot do that. Like, I sat here and I asked her today, would you be willing to try to change the process? Would you, are you willing to change the system? She said yes. That's what we need. We need people that are willing to change this system. I'm tired. It's like, I explained to her, it's like our government. One president goes, the next president comes, tears it all down. We continue to start all over, start all over, start all over. There's good pieces and there's bad pieces. Our job is to remove all the bad pieces. She's a great person. Give her the opportunity. Like, some of y'all are not going to like me at the end of today, but some of you are trauma informed, DEI informed. And if you don't see that this is a form of violence against her, then you're doing the wrong thing. You attack a system, you don't attack a person in the system.
Henry Hernandez. Hello. Good evening. My name is Henry Hernandez. I live at thirty-five West Fairview Street. The reason I'm here, I'm a new resident. I lived in Bethlehem twenty years, most of my life. I was born in Honduras. And to start, the reason why I'm here is because when I moved to Allentown, when I bought my house and I was doing some work on it, these words came out of my mouth and there was like, I love Allentown, it's a beautiful city. But if I have kids, I would have to move. And unfortunately, those words did come out of my mouth. I have friends that, I went to the, I graduated from the Bethlehem School District, but I have friends that went to Allentown. They love, you know, I can't say anything negative that they, they had any experiences. But if you look at the, if you look at the statistics and the data, it's sad. You know? So why I'm here and what brought me here and why I'm speaking here? I really don't like public speaking. But I feel like today I had to say something. I'm going to be transparent. I wasn't too aware of what's, what's going on with this whole the board meeting and superintendent and all that. So I went on YouTube and I did my research and there's something going on. And I think we need to step, step back a little bit and actually be transparent because it's not being transparent. Because I'm new. I don't know too much was going on and I feel like there's not, there's something going on that somebody's not being transparent with the whole process. So I also belong, like I said, something got me when I said those words. And I'm being put in meetings, meeting people. And I got to be part of the Latino, the Allentown Latino Education Coalition. And that also is another meeting that talked about those things. There's something wrong. And I feel what, what's going on, going back to the topic, is we need to take a step back. I feel like there's a lot of division. I need to, we need to focus on what, what is the problem? This needs to be more unity for that to be successful. So me being here is taking a stand to say we need to do something about it. And not just talk about it, not create policies, we need to be transparent. Because there's something going on that if I feel it and I'm new to the Allentown School District, reading the newspaper from Allentown, all this, and I sense that there's not enough transparency, even watching the board meetings on YouTube, and I still feel that there's not enough transparency to how the school system is run and how decisions are made. I think there's something wrong and I need, we need to tackle that. Thank you.
Alex Soto. Good evening. My name's Alex Soto. I'm not a resident. I reside at two seven two zero West Columbia Street. Reason, I certainly picked an interesting meeting to, to come to for the first time. Thank you to the board for setting up this extraordinary meeting today to be able to hear the community. I commend you, Dr. Burks, for having the courage to be where you're, where you're sitting right now, knowing that it's a role that has had high turnover and being willing to step into this process. I step in with high neutrality. I'm one of the mentors for our local church. Seventy percent of our kids come to the Allentown School District. And what I was hoping to hear tonight is what is your vision for the role? Thank you to the team that sent out the communication and for, for getting the word out that this was happening today. But what I'm really after is what is your vision and how do you plan to impact the situation here at the Allentown School District for our kids? That's all. Thank you.
President Matheson, I have no more comment cards on agenda items unless somebody didn't turn one in.
Thank you. On tonight's Board of Directors report, we have one agenda item, which is to approve the contract for Dr. Carol become permanent superintendent. May I have a motion for the approval of the Board of Directors report?
So moved.
Palmer? And who said, who also, who else spoke? I couldn't hear.
I did.
Ms. Ortiz, I'll let you second the motion. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. To address my Latino community, we did have a Latino acting superintendent, Dr. Martinez. She was with us for a few months. She made forty thousand dollars, took it for her daughter's operation and then bounced. So that you can't say that we did not try. Number two, I brought in Dr. Burks because of what was happening with Dr. Stanford. I asked our board to bring her in. I brought her in as acting supervisor, knowing or being reassured that there was going to be a search. Now, things were conducted differently when I was at a board meeting because I was, at a board retreat because I was taking care of my mother. As far as, as far as changing the system, the system is still broken. I don't care what nobody says. It wasn't transparent. It was not transparent. The seven board members made a decision to go forward with this on a Saturday, the last Saturday of February. I didn't find out until March. That's not cool. The, the board leadership chose not to call or send emails, anything like that. And even to the point now with the salary, with Dr. Stanford, we were told and emailed every step of the way. This time we were not. Nothing. I received nothing. I didn't know about her, the salary or the, or the contract until it was sent out to us. We had no say so whatsoever. I know I did not. So that's where I'm having a problem. Dr. Burks is a great, intelligent woman. She was who I looked at the first time that we had a, a board search. Unfortunately, HYA has a problem with strong, intelligent, well-educated black women, and they didn't put her on the top ten. But I did want her, I did want her resume pulled when we were looking at them. So when the opportunity, when things weren't working out with Stanford, I pulled it out again and said it gave, you know, to hold my board about her. So it's not about Dr. Burks. This is not about Dr. Burks. This is about the process. And the process is not transparent. It has not been transparent since I've been on this board since two thousand seventeen. Board leadership says one thing and we, the rest of us on the board are on a need to know basis only. We don't make a lot of decisions that, that, especially this decision, when we all should have been made aware of and made sure that we knew what was going on. You know, we're having a lawyer speak as for the board. He don't speak for me. He's not telling, he's not speaking to me, telling our school district that, you know, you're not smart enough, because this is what I'm paraphrasing, you're not smart enough to, to, to pick a superintendent. You're not involved enough to pick a superintendent. How, how dare we have, I'm sorry, Jeff, but how dare you speak like that for, for us? I'm sorry. No, that's arrogant. We are a district who is seventy-three percent Hispanic, thirteen percent black. Who are you to speak for us? You don't understand that. You don't. Your districts, most of your districts are white men oriented. We have a whole different, we have a whole different kind of board now. And because we do, we can understand what our parents, our children, our community, and all the stakeholders are going through. Stop making deals in the back room and make them forward and transparent because I'm sick of it. I'm sick and tired of this. And so that's why I went to the papers, because y'all need to know in Allentown, what goes on behind closed doors and even more closed doors that we don't even know about. So this is not about the superintendent. This is not about Dr. Dr. Burks. You know, I was going to ask that we postpone this, but I know we'll not get a second motion. Just won't. And that's fine too. However, and when it comes to even, like I said, even the salary, we didn't even know the salary. I thought we was doing two, two hundred and thirty thousand. Nope, different. No one told me. Found out when I seen the contract. So going forward, I hope board leadership understands this. Start, start talking to your board members. Not just to the, to the, not just to the attorney. Board members, we are elected, elected by our community. Let us have a voice for our community too as well. Thank you.
Ms. Brown, you were next.
Transparency is very important. Although I am a board member, I'm a parent of the district. All my kids have gone through the district. More than likely, my two grandchildren will come through the district. Transparency is very important on all our parts, right? So as board members, board leadership, administrative staff, we need to be transparent as well as the community. I respect everyone for coming out here tonight. We need to see the room like this more often. When you do not show up and you're not present, you cannot hold people accountable. However, this is not only about transparency from the board communicating to the community. I know each of you are smart and all our meetings are recorded, right? It is important that you do not allow information that is from the media or certain individuals to manipulate your mind and make you see what they want you to see. As a board member, I've spoken many occasions about transparency. Do not be fooled because this is about Dr. Burks. This is about our superintendent, well, interim superintendent. I pause because I try to be careful with what I'm saying. But if anybody knows me, no, I do not have a problem stayed in my mind. When I make decisions, I make decisions based off of the information that is given to me along with any additional information that I can find. I do my research. I do not make decisions based off of emotions. I do not. Support or ask for anyone to speak on my behalf. If I have something that I need to say, I will utilize this platform to say what I need to say. If someone can try to manipulate what I'm saying, I would then put it in writing so it can't be manipulated. Do not be fooled. This presentation. Is about deals that try to be made in the backhand. Do not be deceived. I don't know Dr. Burks. The way it was explained that she was presented here to us as an interim, it is correct from what I understand. However, um. I didn't share with the board when I made a decision for what my decision will be, right? My decision was made because we're in a business of education, right? So we not only are educating our students. We are educating every person that is a part of the district. That's one of the reasons that I do support our interim superintendent. She's not only. Creating the space to properly educate our students, but she is also partnering with the employees of the district. To educate them. As a black American woman, I do understand diversity. I do understand representation matters. However, I prefer someone despite of who they are, what they look like. To educate my child if they're going to educate my child. So again, because sometimes people like to misconstrue your words. Representation matters. But what matters most is the person's ability to do the job. I'm gonna leave it at that for now. I don't, I don't want to go. I'm, I'm upset. I'm upset, right? And I'm just, I don't care if somebody's mad because I'm taking time, but I'm upset. I'm beyond upset. I don't, when I advocate for students, I don't do it just for black students. I do it for all students. When I come up here and spend my time on the board, I'm here for all students. I'm taking time from my children to be here. I'm taking time from visiting my grandchildren to be here. I work a full-time job. I'm involved in the community. I'm helping people throughout the night, throughout the weekend. And I still have to study this material to make sure that I'm making informed decisions. So what is frustrating is when I'm here to do a good job. There's people trying to manipulate you to, to make you believe. Something that is based off of their opinion and because they can't have their way. So we have to be mindful and I'm saying we all must be transparent. As a board member, I don't receive all the information. I did not receive that letter. And I'm sorry for that. However, you guys are here today. Don't let this be the first day. Don't let this be the last day. You have to come out and you have to hold your elected officials accountable. But as we are in these seats and, and I'm gonna say this to my colleagues and I'm gonna leave it as that. I'm gonna try to leave it as that. It is important that we are transparent with each other as well as the community. And when we cannot have our way. It does not mean, you know. I'm gonna get upset and I'm gonna put a picture, paint a narrative. So we can then one, create a race war and then two deceive people. That is not what we're here for. We're here to make sure that we have a superintendent in place to do their job. Because it's not even our job to dictate, delegate what the employees of the district is to do. It is our job to make sure that we're working in collaboration with each other as well as the interim superintendent, superintendent. To make sure that our kids are getting educated. And if we cannot do that, then we don't need to be in these seats. But it's your job to hold us accountable. But do your research.
Good evening, everyone. I just, I want to, I want to, I'm going to say a few things. Number one, we have to stay focused. Because the, the, the position that I'm taking tonight is the fact that. There was no procedure. There was no part, nothing was put in place. And so what happens is when you begin to let people treat you any kind of way, this is what you're going to get. Now, back in October, because I don't have, I missed what, two meetings? I wasn't at that February twenty-fifth retreat. And it ain't about me, so I'm not going to go into that part. But, um, I wasn't there and, and I should not be able not to be. I should be, should be able to not be there for the other eight board members. To make a decision. They should be able to make a decision. That's in the best interest of all of us. Back in October, when Dr. Stanford was let go. The paper wrote, and I believe it was also made mention, that we will begin the process of electing. A new superintendent in December. It is March. The one day that I didn't show up, and again, it's not about me. I got a letter on, I think, March first, that said you will be getting a letter in the mail as well as this one you get in via email. That said that seven of us made a decision and we're offering Dr. Stanford a contract. Now. I mean, what, what I think? Oh, not Stanford Burks. Let's get it right. I'm sorry. So, so we got that letter. Okay, fine. Then. There was no process. Still no talk about process. Actually, I think I saw an email that said, pretty much, look, our numbers beat yours. It was very unprofessional. And so the concern for me was not even for my, my colleagues. It was for the kids. Because again, at the end of all of this. Is the kids whose parents, would you were the parents, right? I'm a parent. We're sending our kids every day to be educated. And they're going into those buildings in hostile environments. And they're not being educated. And here we are busting up behind, working two and three jobs. And we're thinking that these people are educating our kids and they're making decisions that are in the best interest of our students. But that's not so. And I'll tell you why it's not so. Because if in that retreat session. If seven people had came to an understanding that this is something that we, we may have wanted to do, they could have called a special executive session. They could have, they could have done a lot of things. But the message that I got was this is what it is. And this is what it's going to be because we got the votes that we want. Now that's not transparency. Now I sat here and I think it was eleven people who got up and spoke today. Seven of those eleven, and correct me if I'm wrong, said, can we just wait? So that we can come to some kind of understanding so we can all be on the same page. This is not an attack on Dr. Burks. Then three people got up and said a little different. Because they too, I guess, are concerned because they don't want this, this stop. The, the pause in the kids' education. But we pay Dr. Burks, which is public information, eight hundred and fifty dollars a day. So if she's really committed, she ain't going away. We gotta stop doing things in a vacuum and we can't, gotta stop having amnesia. It was just October. That myself, school board, uh, director, I was on the street with the N A A C P fighting for our kids, saying that they were at risk. Calling the parent. Maybe you had to work. Wasn't a lot of us out there, but I would go out there. I said, I'd rather run with one. Then that is going to fight than a hundred that's going to fall back. And it's not about, look, I love my people, all of my people. It's not about white, black. We have all types, all nationalities in our school district. It's about our kids. And I said, I said this in my, in my living room and I'm gonna say it now in the boardroom. We gotta come together and stop, while we sitting here fighting amongst each other, talking about us white, black, Latino, this, this nationality. Folks that don't have our best interests at heart, they're plotting and they're carrying out their agendas. My mother told me a long time ago, every smiley face is not happy and I believe that. So it doesn't matter how nice you are, Dr. Burks. It's not about you. Let's for once do the right thing. Take a pause. Who, how can somebody say? Correct me if I'm wrong, please tell me. How can somebody say, well, there's nobody out there that's going to apply for this job, so we shouldn't just put it out there? How dare you? Nobody has the right to say that. And I, and, and back in October, when I was standing in the streets, I said. That our kids are at risk. We didn't want the pause. I don't think any of us want the pause, but we want somebody in here that's qualified. Somebody that's going to do the job. Maybe somebody more qualified than Dr. Burks and maybe they're purple. You understand what I'm saying? But it's our job. I don't know about you, but as a parent, it's my job to ensure that my kid gets the best education that they can possibly get here. And it's, it's not anybody's job to tell me what's out there for my kid or not. It's my job to go looking for it. So tonight. That's the position that I'm taking. I don't make the motion to take a pause. It has nothing to do with you. Just pause. Pause does not mean that our kids don't continue to get the services and the education that you've been pushing. Keep pushing. Because before you got here, I will say as a board member, a lot of that push I see you pushing, it was not allowed. That's what transparency looks like. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Lisa, I'll second that motion.
Mr. Parliamentarian, is that motion in order?
A motion to table would be in order, but not a motion to pause.
I'll make the motion to table.
I will second that motion.
Excuse me, I have, I have something to say before we do this. I didn't get to speak.
Table is on, is there and a motion to table is not discussable.
No, but, uh, Ms. Matheson, I wanted to speak on, when you said, um, any comments, I wanted to speak after Lisa was done.
So I'll withdraw my motion until the discussion is over. Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, because I'd like to say something. Okay, thank you.
I also wanted to make a comment.
All right, go ahead. Jen is first.
I just want to say this. I'm speaking as a parent now, okay? My daughter's been in this district for, she's in fifth grade. Dr. Burks is the best damn superintendent that we've had since my kid has been in this district. The best. I've gone to her with situations recently and she's been on top of it. She keeps me updated. And she doesn't stop until things get done. This is not about race. This is not about politics. This is about what's best for our kids. And Dr. Burks is it. She's the one. She is what Allentown needs. Everybody wants this to be a better district and everybody wants their kids to get the best education. Dr. Burks is the one that's going to lead us there. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Palmer?
First off, thank everyone for coming out. Um, I would love to see everyone again and again and again and again. And I'm going to address things how they were stated. Um. I take umbrage to being told that I was not transparent. Back when Dr. Burks came to our district, we had no one else that applied. That was stated. It was also stated that if we chose to not do a search, we had that right. No one said anything then. We are now using that right. I do apologize, uh, Ms. Conover. I thought you were told. I apologize, Ms. Harris. I thought you were told. We are using that right that we have to do this. We were elected to do these things, what is best for your students. I am sorry about the previous superintendents, but look around, more than half this board wasn't here for them. We're here to make it right now. That's what we're doing for your students. You can't continue to build a house by tearing it down. I've said that so many times. And this is what we are trying to do. So to come up here and say that there was no transparency, this was as transparent as we could have been. This was a four-month interview. This was not a one-day interview. She's been attempting to take this position for months. It turns out that she is doing a good job. And allow me to ask this question. If we did a search and she came back as the best candidate. How many of you would still believe in transparency at that point?
I would.
That is my question. Because right now, honestly, it seems like no matter what we do, we will never get that trust. It seems like no matter what we say, we will never get that trust, even though we will not hear before. We have been transparent. We have been open about most, if not all, things that we are allowed to be open about. And this is what we are still getting back. I, again. When we had that retreat, it. It is not something that we were manipulated into saying, manipulated into thinking. Every single one of us has our own mind. Every single one of us can think for ourselves. Yes, there may have been something stated by someone, but it's still up to us to come to that conclusion. It's still up to us to make decisions for ourselves. If I was not able to make a decision for myself, I would not be sitting here. If every one of us was not able to make a decision for ourselves, we would not be sitting here. We are doing what we know is right. Regardless, if you believe us or not, we are doing what we feel to be right. And we are doing what we feel is right for our students. At this point, it seems like we are losing what is right for our students. And instead, wondering what is right for now, what is right for me right now. We were just read other superintendent salaries and still, still, after being told, she's not even in the top half. Still, there is a complaint about her salary. If we do a search, correct me if I'm wrong, is that not over forty thousand dollars? No one is complaining about how much money it costs to do a search. We're complaining about an extra twenty thousand compared to her predecessor. I'm not understanding what is happening here. Where did we lose what's right for our students and instead what's right for us right now? I'm doing what I believe is right for our students. I believe all of us are doing what's right for our students. And again, I understand you buzzed in, Ms. Conover, and that's why I said I apologize to both of you. I was not under the impression you did not know. I always assumed that you didn't know.
But it's not, ma'am.
Yes, but I, you want to comment?
I want to make a comment. I'm going to look this way.
I, I did hit the buzzer.
Okay.
You can go ahead, Miss.
I assume I'm taking too much time, so.
So I just want for clarity purposes, when I say transparency, I'm going back again to when we said as a board that we will be, going to be. We were gonna, it was, our decision was going to be inclusive of the community. And so when you make a decision. Without including or not doing what you said you, 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 you were going to do, then that's the transparency piece that I'm talking about. You can't make a decision without including the people who voted you in.
I, can I, can I respond? Can I just respond?
But I thought.
I'm just, I just, because I was, I, so my response to that is, things like that happen in government every day. You have, uh. So you have directors that get hired all the time. You have, I'll use just the city as an example, a deputy mayor that got hired. You have a director of public works, director of technology. You have individuals that get hired because you put those people in position to make the decisions for the citizens. That's why they are hired. That's why city council gets voted in. That's why the mayor, the governor, the president. So they can have people in place to make the correct decisions.
There's no other that you have a comment?
Yes, I do. So I'm speaking from many hats tonight. I'm speaking from the hat of being a parent of two students in Allentown School District. I'm speaking from being a community leader and someone that has their hands on Allentown School District students. and someone that has their hands on Allentown School District students, probably second to Dr. Burks, the amount of students that I interact with on a day-to-day basis. So when I ran for the seat, well, not really ran, I interviewed for the seat, I came in because I wanted to make an impact in an area where students, parents and community leaders felt like there needed to be an impact. Someone spoke for me this week, and I don't like that. No one should speak for me. My actions speak for themselves. My integrity speaks for itself. The reason why I'm in this seat is because of Allentown students. That's the only reason why I am here. The decisions that I make when I'm on this board solely depended on Allentown School District students. That is where I speak from. Solely. And I will say this today. If my word means anything, Dr. Burks is the person for the job. I'm not even saying woman, man, or indifferent. She is the person for the job. Before I took the seat, unlike a lot of people that are here today, I'm so happy you guys are here, and I'm hoping this continues. I used to sit in this, in one of these seats for the board meetings. Not with the intention of running for the board, but wanting to know what's happening on the school board and stand at that podium and talk about it. And if I did not like it, I voiced it. That's what I did. So when I'm making the decision from the seat where I'm at right now, I'm only thinking about the students. I watched Dr. Burks before I got in the seat. And I was observing this woman as she was working with the community, talking to parents, having town hall meetings. Like she's working with administration, she's keeping all these meetings, she's interacting. So I was wondering to myself if anyone that's sitting in this audience did not interact with Dr. Burks is by choice. Because she made herself accessible to everyone. I was so impressed with that. That she made herself accessible to everyone. She tried to assess the needs of not only the students, but the community, cuz she's been thinking about the children as a whole. Not just as they come to school and they leave at three P M. She's been thinking about the whole entire family. I watched her do this for four months, and I remember thinking to myself recently, wow, she must feel kinda disrespected by us. Because here she is doing this work, working diligently for the community, and we're not even making her an offer. We're not even making our offer. We just have her doing the work and come, I commend you so much, Dr. Burks. Cuz there's people that came in as an interim and probably would have just sat back in the middle of all of this and not do the job that you're doing, but you've gone above and beyond with people throwing that in your face. People don't know what happens behind the scenes. There's a lot of disrespect that happens behind the scenes. And she's taken it on the chin and continue to work diligently for our students. She shows up every single day, and not just her, the entire team that you see sitting across over there. And I listened to people stand at the podium today and disrespect these people that are working diligently for our students every single day. That is very upsetting to me. And I must say this, yes, you guys are saying it's not about them, but I stood, I, I sat here and watched people point at the solicitor and speak, and yes, you guys are saying it's not about that, it's about the process. I get it. I completely agree with you. I would like a motion tonight for us to create a policy and procedure so that this does not happen again. Because I'm very systematic. I like things on paper. So I would like to make a motion on that tonight. But for us to make a motion to table Dr. Burks and expect her to still show up, right, after we have made her an offer, expect her to still show up every single day for us to do a search, especially specifically for a Latino person, that's discrimination. It was not stated? It's not said today. Everybody's speaking on platforms. I am in the community. I did not say today. It has been spoken on platforms. I've heard that. That's why I'm saying that right now. And guys, I don't wanna get emotional. I'm just letting you know the facts. This is the fact of where we are right now. I don't like that there is division. There should not be any division between any of us right now. It's unity. And it's the process, and I get that. So if we make a motion tonight, if at the end of this, I wanna finish my statement, everyone got to finish, finish theirs. I would like going forward tonight, after we do this process, for us to work together to come up with a policy and procedure in, on paper that we sign off on, so this does not happen again. So we cannot, so none of this can happen. We can all be unified in the process.
Oh, may I suggest that if you would want to make that motion, that you make it under new business, please?
Okay, perfect. We can do that. But again, to the community, as I finish my statement, I love the fact that you guys are here. But please just understand that the place that we are making this decision from is from us observing Dr. Burks for months and seeing the job that she has done for months. She is more than qualified to do the job, and that is why we are making this decision tonight.
Ms. Andreen, I thank you for that. However, because there is no one to do policy right now, because that's under me, and there's, having been a policy done since two thousand twenty-one in November, it's gonna take after Congress to get that done, but I thank you for that.
Ms. Conover, do you still wish to make a motion?
What if you're a policy chick?
I can't hear you, Audrey.
I said, I asked, uh, Ms. Conover, she wants to make her motion.
Your mic is not on.
I'd like to make a motion to table the vote for Dr. Uh, Burks as our superintendent for three years until we can create a committee so that we can be inclusive of, um, the groups that have attended tonight, the community.
I'll second.
All right, the, the motion has been moved and seconded. There is no discussion on a motion.
I just wanna clarify something. Uh, you did say for her motion to elect for three years, the term period is longer than three years.
Was it?
In the contract that you have, it went from, uh, July one, twenty twenty, uh, three through June thirty, twenty twenty-seven.
So that part.
I'm sorry, from March ten, I'm sorry, from March ten, twenty twenty-three, until June thirty, twenty twenty-seven.
So, um, can we include the dates that the solicitor just shared with us?
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, so, so nobody will, uh.
Please call the roll.
This is on the motion to table.
A motion to, of yes, would table the motion this evening.
Ms. Ortiz?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Dr. Santana?
No.
Mrs. Wilt?
No.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
No.
Ms. Noel Brown?
No.
The motion fails two to seven.
The motion for, to table has failed, so then I will move back to the main motion. May I have a motion for the approval of the Board of Directors' report?
So move. I, I believe there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry, I real, I just realized.
Okay, now you can.
Motion and, and a seconder.
We can do a roll call.
Discussion, please call the roll.
Ms. Conover?
No.
Ms. Harris?
No.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Ms. Noel Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilt?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Seven to, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Hey, uh, I would like to call Dr. Burks. Uh, we have Judge Johnson with us this evening and Ms. Ramos to come to the podium so that we can swear in Dr. Burks.
Sorry, anytime you're ready.
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dr. Carol D. Burks.
I, Dr. Carol D. Burks.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Good evening, everyone. First, I wanna say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you to the School Board of Directors for your belief, trust, and faith in me to lead and serve the Allentown School District. Who would have thought that a young woman who grew up in poverty in a city, Bridgeport, Connecticut, quite comparable to Allentown? My parents, they didn't graduate from high school. So my why is very deep. I've spent more than twenty-five years of my career committed to working in communities just like Allentown, where the majority of the students were Latino. Where the majority of students, the other half of the students were black, as well as students who were Caucasian and who lived in poverty, just like me. I've been relentless. It's gotten me into trouble, my fight, my passion. Because I believe that all sixteen thousand one hundred of the students here can be successful. There are so many great teachers, community leaders, pastors, other administrators in a caring community, and of course, my church community. And I'm not gonna be, I, I have strong faith that believed and poured into my life for me to stand here today. What a testament. And so what I've done throughout my career is I've spoken and I've fought to impart in young people and all the adults who have been entrusted in their care that our students are destined for greatness. They can become any and everything they want to become. But it's gonna take the collective community to do it. It takes all of us. All the passion I heard here in this room today. We need you. I need your support. I can't do this work alone. Our children need your support. All this, we need to come together, and we need to, all that passion and fire, so we need to push our legislators. I love you all legislators. Okay, but to give funding to our kids, to our community. All, everyone here, I challenge you. I invite you. Serve as mentors, tutors. We need teachers. We need custodians. We need security. We need paraprofessionals. Our kids need food services. Thank you. Our kids need all of us. It's gonna take the collective strengths of everyone here in this room to ensure that all those sensational, talented, gifted, creative young people that, I said, I tell you my story because someone told me I couldn't be here today. I told you, my parents, they did not graduate from high school. I have three master's degrees. I have a doctoral degree from Columbia University. You know what people said? That would never happen. But let me tell you, hard work, great teachers, great leaders, a great community pouring into my life has me here today. We need, our children need every person in this room. Everyone here. I need your radio station. You're serious. Yes, you're serious. You have a following. I was like, all right, I need to know you. Cuz you have a calling on your life that you can make a significant difference in this community. I know you are ready. I need to partner with you. You're powerful. I would say, hey, who's that? We need everyone. I'm so honored. I'm privileged. I'm humbled to be here. It is my desire, my inspiration, that, that I could be the light to help bring us together as a community. We need to come together, all of us. We're fighting each other. Why? We need each other to make the difference in this community. This is a beautiful community. I look out my window, the window that they let me sit in for a little while, and look at the mountains, the, the parks, all the great things that we need to capitalize as a community. I said to the mayor, we need commercials. We need to showcase the richness of the culture and the history of this community. Instead of, we're like, ah, ah, ah. But it's gonna take everyone to do this. I know the success of my work can only be defined by my ability to collaborate, to build trust, and to cultivate relationships. There's a researcher named Dr. James Comer. He said, no significant learning can take place unless there's a relationship. It's all about relationships, relationships, relationships. We need to work on our relationships so we can come together for our children. They need it. They deserve it. The adults who are on the front line every day, working in partnership with you. We need all the families in our community working together. Wanna build a strong foundation where we require honesty, open communication, transparency, and a commitment from all of us, everyone in this room, to be, to serve our students and put them at the forefront. The forefront of our thinking. All the stakeholders can expect to be engaged in these efforts if you, you partner with me. I invite you to collaborate with us so we can build upon the unique gifts and strengths from within our community. We have more organizations in this community doing so many things, but we need to be coherently aligned. We should be a force. She's, people, people should be talking about Allentown, saying they wanna be a part of us, not us like, oh, we're from Allentown. We have a great community. Together, we can ensure that our beloved Allentown has what it needs to succeed and prosper. My door will always be open, and all members of this community will be able to access me. As some of the people said, I answer you. Text me ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night. If I see it, I'm going to respond, because I am in service to you. We need to make our students' voice a priority and elevate them. And, and I will personally make family outreach and empowerment a commitment to my team, my staff over here, the families. I, I thank you. I thank you for all your hard work. I know I'm stretching you. They're like, oh, yeah, we're tired. But I appreciate you. I thank you for your hard work and your belief in our children, and of course, and of all the other adults entrusted in their care. The passion I heard here tonight and just for the past four months has made me fall in love with this community. I love Allentown and its richness and the great heritage and all the stories I hear. I went to Allen. I went to Dera. I went to Rob. People are so proud of that. I've never worked in a community that so many people stay here in the community. They're proud of the community. They wanna be a part of the work that's happening here. I look forward that together, all of us working together make Allentown one of the highest performing school districts in Pennsylvania. We can do it together. Yes, we can. Si se puede, si se puede, si se puede. Thank you.
Do we have any comment cards for non-agenda items?
We have one comment card. Robert E. Smith, Jr.
Robert E. Smith, Jr., I live on the east side of Allentown, ten sixty East Gordon Street. Congratulations, Dr. Burke. Welcome to Allentown. All right, you always have an open invitation to come to Staley's with me, any lunch that you want, okay? I'll even pay.
You'll even pay? I don't know if he can play. He's gonna get me in trouble. But yes, I'd love to, Smith.
Since we're being transparent in this new beginning of transparency, which is so important, I'm concerned about William Allen, and I'm told to ask questions, I heard tonight, so my questions are for just transparency, there's two consultants there, and that's what I wanna talk about. Can we just ease up on the consultants? Cuz we've spent a lot of money on consultants. And I just wanna.
And I just want to make sure the public and even the board know that there's two consultants at William Allen right now, and I didn't see Dr. Rao's name on any agenda. She's a retired superintendent from Lancaster. And how much are we paying her? I don't know if the board knows about this. If the board doesn't know about it, I didn't know about it because I didn't see it in any of the personnel. Could we find out about that and maybe get back to us? Because I think we should know when a consultant is being hired in one of our high schools. For transparency's sake, of course. Also, there's a Liberty Principal Consultant also over there as a mentor. That was in the agenda book, so thank you. I am concerned that two administrators are there every day, too. So that is a concern of mine as a taxpayer, two consultants, two administrators. And I'm also concerned for students because I have a lot of parents, a lot of coworkers that I work with that have students in Allen. So that's where I get a lot of information every day. As some of you board members know, you have students in Allen and other schools. Well, when a student doesn't, is in this hallway, they usually ask if they have a pass. This is a simple request. Where's your pass? That's what you would think a person would ask if a student was walking in the hallway. They wouldn't be screamed at first. First, they would be asked their pass usually, not just screamed at. So these are things that I wish the board and Dr. Burks, you would take a look into, please. Thank you very much for your time, and let's have a new beginning of transparency.
Tim Ramos.
Uh, Tim Ramos, fourteen O'Leary Linda Street. Um, I'm a lifelong resident of Allentown. I grew up through the Allentown School District. I've personally witnessed, uh, the many, um, deficiencies and inefficiencies that have, uh, grown through the Allentown School District. Um, a lot of you board members who are new, you have not been here, uh, long enough to bear the brunt of all the, I, in my opinion, fairly to bear the brunt of the wrath of our community because you're new. You're very new. A- Andrew Brown is new. Um, Latasha's been here just a little bit, but she's fairly new. Uh, Ms. Santana is very new. Um, and I would say to Dr. Burks, um, a lot of what you're dealing with is, uh, you have been made a victim, in my opinion, because of past board members, because of past practices and the way this school board has behaved towards the community, doing things behind closed doors, violating the Sunshine Act multiple times. Um, this is something I've heard previous board members complain about right outside those doors. Um, some of those board members have gone on to occupy other seats in our local government, and they still participate in the same things and don't, there's no outcry. These things are being done behind closed doors, and I believe that, uh, if there are certain deals that are being made, uh, it is the duty, the moral duty of every board member to make those things, uh, to, to expose it and make it clear to the community that, hey, there's a special interest. There's businessmen. There's other politicians who want to control this board. There's politicians working right now who are already elected. They already control parts of this board. They can, they want to control the county government. They want to control city council. And that is the issue that many of our community, uh, is responding to. Um, I was asked to join the Allentown Latino Education Coalition two months ago. As I understand it, they've only had two or three meetings. Um, I wasn't part of the third meeting. I work a lot. I was in here earlier because, uh, I work. I was in upstate New York today. I just got back when I walked through that door. So as a contributing member to that group, Dr. Burks, um, and something that I said in meetings with that group, I said, I don't know what some of you are expecting, but whatever this decision, i- it's already done. I was like, so we, as a group, can reach out to Dr. Burks? And many agreed. Many agreed. There's a consensus, and there's not, uh, there's not an issue with Dr. Burks. There's one hundred percent an issue with the process. Even our board members have confirmed that there's an issue with the process. So I'd like to invite you to meet with the group. Uh, many who know me, they know I ran for mayor of Allentown. And in spite of our political differences ideologically, um, we have members on the group. Me and Victor Martinez are friends of zero kind. But we understand. He would say the same thing. We are not friends. But we understand that there are things that are bigger than ourselves. Our young people is bigger than ourselves. The future of our community is bigger than ourselves. And I believe we have an opportunity to build. As I understand it, some people have said you had issues in previous positions. As I understand it, it's that you don't take no BS. I like that attitude. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say to you what I said to Dr. Stanford in a private meeting, and since I said it, I'm okay repeating it. I hope that the fight you gave in other districts you'll do here for our young people, and above all, the duty of every one of you is to fight for our taxpayers, not to take the position of parents. Fight for our taxpayers. That's the most important thing. But what I'm gonna say is, tell the politicians to kick rocks. Do what's best for the taxpayer and the students of this district. Not the businessmen, not the politicians who want to control and influence every wind that comes to the city of Allentown. Thank you. I look forward to meeting with you, and if anyone wants to talk after, I will be available.
Victor Martinez. Are there other cards?
So I'm, I'm glad that Tim said what he said because I agree with him. But there's one thing that I will say. Every time this man and I see each other anywhere, we are respectful to each other. We shake hands. We say hello to each other. We're cordial with each other. Um, so I just want to bring that out because that's how it should be. We should be able to have our differences, but at the end of the day, we still go and fight for a common cause, right? I don't like the fact that this turned into a race thing, that we want a Latino superintendent, and that's what we're fighting for. Of course, I fight for my community. Of course, the people here fight for our community, right? We have to voice our concerns about our community. That doesn't take away any value from any other community, right? And, and I, I'm not happy with the fact that it turned into a race thing just to justify the fact that you guys are wrong. Just the fact, to justify the fact that you did this wrong, right? You went to a retreat. You made a decision without saying, well, let's ask the people what they think. No, you did it on your own. Your own board members are telling you in your faces that you did it wrong. Oh, and by the way, they're also telling you, this is not the first time that it happens. And with all the respect to, to Dr. Brink's, we heard the same thing about how great the previous superintendent was, and how great the previous superintendent was, and how great the previous superintendent was, and how wonderful and prepared and qualified the previous superintendent was. So please, it has nothing to do with you. Absolutely not. It has to do with the way the board is conducting business. And don't justify your behavior by turning this into, oh, all they want is a Latino superintendent. No, we want a qualified superintendent just as much as you do. We want someone that can do the job just as much as you do. But that being said, we do have a lack of representation. Lack of representation with teachers, lack of representation with directors, lack of representation on your staff. There is a problem there that cannot be avoided or ignored. So please, take those into consideration, the fact that, yes, seventy-seven percent of the school district is Latino, and there is no representation. So again, don't mix the two. We can chew gum and walk at the same time. I invite you tomorrow, come to the radio show, speak to the Latino Hispanic community. I welcome you. I hope that you are everything and then some. And I hope you don't go anywhere, and I hope that you stick around, push through. Because again, we've seen this before, and that's our concern, the fact that we've seen this before. We've seen this movie five times. We're ready, we're, we're ready for, for a new movie. We don't want to keep watching the same old movie over and over again. So I welcome you. I, like I said before, I have no doubt of your qualifications. I've heard great things about you, and I just wanted, for the record, that on Monday, after you went to the Dominican, uh, flag racing in the city of Allentown City Hall, I personally on the radio said that I was so glad because for the first time in the time that I've been here, it's the first time that I've seen the superintendent at any flag racing that has to do with the Hispanic Latino community. So if no one told you, we said that on the radio the very next day on Monday. Wow, she was there. So again, nothing to do with race, nothing to do with you, but of the failure of the board for the way they did things. That's all. Thank you.
David De La Rosa.
Good evening, board. Um, I'm David De La Rosa. I'm a student at the Executive Education Academy Char School, and I'm also a member of the Allentown Youth Council. And I come today because I think that it's only appropriate that a student that resides here in the city also speaks on this regards. Um, the decision was made, right? Um, I love that passion, right, that this, that this group of people can come out today, and I heard it before, that this needs to be the same crew that comes next board meeting, the one after, and the one after that one. That they're holding the board accountable, that we're not just standing here, but that the same board is saying, well, this person came out. This person came out because this district isn't, and, and this thing about race is, is a great point. I love that to Victor and Tim's point about race. It isn't about race because if you think about it, the district is more than just this Hispanic. I'm Hispanic myself. But it's more, I've been, I was part of the district. I was a student of the district. I was, I went to district schools. You have faces. There aren't just Hispanic, Black, White, these categories. There, when you walk in, I mean, there was an article that put out, Allentown is either one of the, the largest Syrian refugee cities, or, or if not the largest. So when you have these refugees, I went to school with some of them, they don't view themselves as Syrians. Hey, I'm walking in here as, they're Alantonians. The same way I came in there, they're Alantonian. The same way a Black student walks in, they're Alantonian. The same way. And so that's what we need to start viewing, is that how does this benefit not only our Hispanic and our Black community, but how does this impact our white students in the district? How does this impact our Asian students in the district? How does this impact, this impact as a whole? Because we're not viewing this. A lot of times, this is a problem, and I say this with passion because it is an issue that needs to be addressed. We're no longer viewing this as students of this Allentown School District. We're no longer viewing this as taxpayers. I'm a taxpayer myself. I'm only sixteen years old. I have a job. I'm a taxpayer of this, of this school board. So we're no longer viewing this as, as taxpayers, students, families. We're viewing this, well, uh, I mean, the last, you know, whatever. Like, that, that has to change. Because the same decision that's made right now will not impact the next Hispanic student, but it will impact the next Black student, the next Black staff member, the next white staff member. That is what we need to start focusing on. So, Dr. Burks, I've had the opportunity to talk to Dr. Burks at the Council View. Mr. Palmer, I've also, tons of times, we were able to talk. And I love that we're able to have this discussion, but this needs to be more open. This passion, like this transparency thing, yes, it's an issue, but it's an issue that we, like, absolutely can work. We're not, stop stalling. A lot of times, we stall because we say, well, it's impossible for us to do this. We don't need to hire the next person to do this. We question your own abilities. We question our own abilities as citizens. I know there's tons of people watching right now. They question their own abilities, whether they could come here tonight or not. I made it here. I'm sixteen. I don't have, my parents couldn't make it, but I tried making it. And we could all do that. I'm, the same way, we, we, there's some people in this room, taxpayers that are sixty, seventy, eighty years old. They should have a voice the same way I do on this board. The same way that, that the board puts out a flyer for the Allentown School District. The Allentown School District encompasses every resident because we are all contributors to it, one way or another. So I invite, like, every single one of you to this passion that you come out today. I hope to come to more meetings. Hope to have more discussions, dialogues with every single one of you. Not just representing my school, not just, but representing my city. Every single one of them, every single student, every single non-student, every single resident. Because you all, even our staff members that are standing, every single one of these staff members that we barely put an eye on what happened to our, that we had discussions about ESL and our paraprofessionals. I remember the impact they had. I didn't need ESL, but I remember my friend needing it. I didn't need special needs for, for any, for anything, but I remember my friend needing it. And what would he be without those staff members? What would he be without that decision to put that person there? The same people I don't see in this room because they feel that they can't make it. So help us be welcoming. I'm sorry that, like, I'm consuming your time, but help us open arms because every single one of us are the Allentown School District. Regardless of race, regardless of who was able to make it, regardless, a lot of the district have parents, one-parent households, working family households. I talked to Dr. Burks about this. We had a long, lengthy discussion. Two hours, three hours. We can sit here all day and have a discussion. How is the, we, we talked about, how is the poverty rate here in Allentown affecting our students? This is beyond adults. This is beyond our, this is hit everyone. We really talk about this. Oh, homelessness. I asked Dr. Burks, hey, how's the district looking into homelessness in youth, in kids? One thing is to be homeless, but as a parent, you think about that mentally, to have a child in the streets, to make it to school and to see someone with their, with their great clothing, their brand-new shoes, their new Jordans and their new uniform, and to see, look at, oh, well, I, mine, mine is dirty. I might not make it to school today. How can we support every member? And that's what I ask for all of us, not just the board. I hope that transparency continues, not just the board, but every single one of us standing here and watching throughout the district. Is that we have that same passion that we're able to motivate ourselves to put the next foot in to not only talk to Dr. Burks, to talk to our board members that are sitting, it's beyond Dr. Burks, it's our board members that sit here. Not only to realize that you are all contributors of this cause, that every single one of you will impact just one decision. Maybe that one decision will change the life of thousands of students. Maybe that one decision may alter whether or not that student will continue to have an education or not. Whether that student in a low-income, low-income household that's subjected to that, that feels that, oh, well, I'm a low-income house, I can't get anywhere. Maybe this one decision will change, will build that bridge, whether or not they will, they feel that they can get somewhere, that they can move on, that they can sit in one of these seats, or that they can sit in one of these seats and speak to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, the board.
I don't have any more comment cards.
Is there any old business to come before this, in this, before us in this meeting? Seeing none, is there any new business to come before the board?
Yes.
Ms. Noel, go ahead.
I would like to make the motion because I'm taking into consideration what everyone has been talking about the entire night, about the lack of transparency, about them not being a part of the process. And we need a policy or something put together to, for us to be able to move forward if this process has to happen again. So.
If I may, unfortunately, the Sunshine Law was changed in August. And in order to deal with a non-agenda item, before we make a new motion, a majority of the board needs to vote to put a non-advertised agenda item before the board and evidence the reason why it is arguably an emergent issue. So, uh, either a request can be made that this gets on the next regularly scheduled agenda, or we make a motion this evening to do that, assuming your board is willing to do that.
And honestly, a simple request would be fine, and we'll just make sure we do it the next time.
Okay, so.
Okay. And in the meantime, you would have time to write something for us?
I mean, you can make a request instead of a formal motion to see if this can get on the agenda next time, and then we can process it in that fashion. But if you want it to be acted upon this evening, uh, because of the recent changes in the Sunshine Law, you need to get a vote first. It's stilted. Get a vote first, and then you need to address the issue through a motion.
May I recommend the more informal route, and we will take care of it that way?
Okay, but you can mention. Okay, but you can mention, you can mention what the motion, I'm, I'm just, you can mention what the motion is. I'm sorry to get.
I can see how technical things get when we're trying to.
Okay. We're highly reg, we're, we're highly regulated by.
Exactly, exactly.
So.
Okay, pretty much you learn the rules as you go along.
Okay, well, uh, so if you want to make them.
I want, this is, this is new to me also. That's why I'm saying that.
Okay. If you want to just describe what action you want to have taken, we can then.
Okay, so let's describe the action and then collectively.
Right, and then, then we'll have.
Let's work through it collectively.
And we'll work together.
Transparency, let's work through it collectively. I would like to see a policy put in place for the hiring process of our school superintendent. I would also like for a committee to be formed and be a part of the formal process. That includes community leaders, parents, and also school administration. I would like to see that happen where this commu, committee is formed. And the commit, committee can be a part of the process of hiring um, the school superintendent. That's what I am placing.
Okay, uh, my recommendation is, and uh, we can, uh, we are a subscriber to the Pennsylvania School Boards Association's Policy, Policy Service. Uh, so we pay dollars with the School Boards Association for that. We can ask them if they do have a policy to that effect, so we can get one and see that it's off the shelf. And then secondly, it really should be vetted either by our policy committee or, or the entire board. Hopefully we will not need to do a.
I'm hoping not, but things happen.
Yeah, I understand.
In Allentown.
I, I, I recognize that, but hopefully we will not need to do that for a while, but, but uh, I, I do believe we should uh, go through the process to adopt a, a policy.
Okay, Ms. Brown, you had a, okay.
Okay.
Is there any other new business to come before us?
Did, did that clear up everything?
Yes, yes.
So this is gonna be, we're gonna discuss this in the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk to you about uh, getting the things that Mr. Sultanic was recommending as background information and then uh, bringing something to you into the rest of the board.
Okay.
Yes. By then at least, maybe even sooner.
At the committee of the whole meeting.
Yeah, okay, alright. Alright. May I have a motion to adjourn uh, this, this special meeting? Ms. Conover, Ms. Second, alright, Ms. Brown? All of those in favor? Anybody opposed? Alright, we're gonna take about a five minute break while we set up for the next part of the committee of the hall.
Good evening, all. I'd like to call to order the Education Committee of the whole or the Board of Directors for the School District for the City of Allentown for today, March ninth, two thousand twenty-three. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and/or non-agenda items. First opportunity for comments is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. If you choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to Deputy Superintendent Ramos. She has her hand up. Comment cards are located on the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and commonly limit your remarks to three minutes. Superintendent Dr. Burks, do you have any remarks?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Conover. Good evening, School Board of Directors to our community. Tonight's education program of the Committee of the Whole Agenda contains one item for consideration for action. The item for consideration is approval of an agreement which will support our families by providing onsite physical examinations for students who are registering for kindergarten. This is another example of the district's commitment to partnering within the community to impact the lives of our early learners and to support our countdown to kindergarten initiative. Ms. Bryant will be, will share additional information, and I would also like to thank her and Ms. Pollock for collaborating on these efforts to support our children. Ms. Bryant.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I request the board's approval to engage STAR Community Health as the provider of medical services, including onsite physicals to incoming kindergarten students in the Allentown School District. STAR will provide a team of healthcare professionals to provide physical examinations for incoming kindergarten students as required by the State of Pennsylvania for entrance into school. Financial counseling for families who are uninsured or underinsured, as well as services to connect families to health insurance will also be provided. By bringing the healthcare service provider to a neighborhood school, it is our intention to remove barriers to healthcare and school enrollment. By providing early and timely healthcare, we can promote wellness and kindergarten readiness for our incoming students. There is no cost to the district to have the services come onsite. However, as part of in-kind services, we will be providing custodial support and perhaps some staffing for additional enrollment support services at a fee out of our general fund.
Thank you, Mrs. Bryant. At this time, may I have a motion to move the MOU for the kindergarten? So move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposes? Hearing and seeing none, this moves forward to our regular board meeting for next. Okay. Is there any old business? Oh, at this time, we're taking public comments on non-agenda items. Do you have any cards?
Ms. Conover, there was no public comment on agenda or non-agenda.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, is there any old business to come before this board? Is there any new business? May I have a motion to adjourn this portion of our meeting? Is there a second? Any discussion?
I did have old business.
Oh, you have old business, Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Can you move closer to your mic or something because you're far?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Little bit. We're listening.
Okay. Yeah. It was a memorandum of understanding from January twelfth, two thousand and three. The United Way Community Schools Partnership with Ramos Elementary School. And I wanted to untable that. That was exhibit G. We tabled it, and I wanted to untable that.
Two thousand and three? Can you guys hear? I'm sorry.
It was in January, I believe.
Twenty-three, she said?
January.
Yes, two thousand and twenty-three. I don't know what's going on.
Make a motion to untable it?
Yes.
Repeat with the mo, with the.
Can you repeat that again, Mrs. Harrison?
You're going in and out.
You are going in it. You're going in and out. Some of us can't hear you clearly, so maybe you, if you could repeat that again.
Am I allowed to say it for her? I heard what she said.
Yes, please. Can you hear me now?
And? Yes.
Yeah, well, yeah, better.
Yes.
Okay, um, it is from January twelfth, two thousand and three. The United Way Community Schools Partnership with Ramos Elementary School.
And you would like to?
Untable it. We did table that. I would like to untable it. I did speak to the principal about this. They've been working on this for very hard for like ten years, and they wanted to go forward.
Second? Second by Mrs. Matheson. So do you have that so that you can read what that is? Does this of us have that in front of us? Do you have it in front of you?
Yes, I do. So it's a request for the board's approval of the memorandum of understanding with United Way of Greater, of Great Lehigh Valley and the Allentown School District to provide a community schools partnership with Louis A. Ramos Elementary School pending solicitor review. And I can read you what it is. Is that what you want?
Did it, did you hear that? And it was for two thousand and twenty-three, not two thousand and three?
Correct. Two thousand and twenty-three.
May I have a motion? Are we in order, Solicitor?
I'm just trying. So this was a previous tabled motion. Is this on the agenda?
She don't have it, no. She's pulling it out.
It was on, we tabled it on January twelfth during the Committee of the Whole.
Okay. So the question is, I'm just under, so it's not on the agenda this evening for action, correct?
No.
So in order to act on this, we would need a majority of the board to initially say to put this on the agenda in the same way that your situation was earlier because it was a non-agenda item, we would need the board, a majority of the board to agree to put this back on the agenda this evening and assert the rationale why, because it's not on the agenda.
So can we untable it and have it go towards our next board meeting or no?
If we untable it, it's on the table then for action.
Yes, that's what I want.
Yeah, I understand. We have to do it in a two-step process. Step one is to get the board to agree to untable this motion because it's not on the agenda at, and for and the rationale for untabling it at this point in time is we have to assert the rationale.
The rationale is that Louis Ramos Elementary School has been working to get, to become a community school for over ten years. This will help them. This money will help them get all the programs that they need, especially for the after-school program, the tutoring programs, what's going on during the day, during a course of action for education. This will help our elementary school children move forward.
Okay, so it, and, and that's the reason it, and they, and the reason that it wasn't on the agenda was that.
Tabled it because we had questions about United Way.
I see. And is it my understanding that this was slated for action, where the United Way is going to be slated for action at a future, at our next board meeting?
I would like it to be because I don't, I no longer. My concern about the United Way is one thing. My bigger concern about our students and what the staff needs at Ramos is bigger.
I, I'm not, I'm not quite, I just want to be sure that we, we do this correctly and, and have the right vote and the rationales. Dr. Burks wants to say something.
I just want to say this is twofold. One, there was a motion that was presented to support the community and schools work at Ramos, and then separately, we're talking about just our overall relationship with the United Way. So it's a two-part process.
So so the issue is we need the majority of the board.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. We need a majority of the board to approve the placement of this item for action on the agenda because of the rationale asserted by Board Member Harris. So that has to be the first step as the motion to get it on the agenda, and then we can vote on it. So it's a two-step process.
I, I have a question, though. I thought we weren't done with conversations about the United Way.
I had originally brought this up at the January twelfth meeting because I wanted more oversight with the United Way. However, after speaking to the principal at Ramos and the disappointing, the disa, um, they were very disappointed because they've been working on this for quite a while. Like I said, this is bigger than us. So this is something that school just, that school has been working on for quite a while, and they need the resources. United Way, we can, we can, we can talk to about them anytime, and we can still hold them, you know, still hold them accountable. However, this program is needed, and students come first.
I, I agree, and I, I don't have a problem with that. I just want to make sure that we're not, you know.
Yes, yes.
We're doing things in order.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So I, it would be the administration's recommendation that one, we untable. Um, it's the board's pleasure, the Ramos, community and schools effort, and then separately, we talk about our overall partnership with the United Way.
Okay.
But the students and families are, need these services, and the school was quite disappointed, and I think we should move forward. It is our recommendation that we move forward on the Ramos, and we could talk about the larger relationship.
Okay, so we, we need to do it in a two-step process. Sorry for.
Well, we need to separate it.
No.
Okay, so step one is to get the board to
On table.
To put this on the agenda for action this evening. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's step one. That's the motion I believe Ms. Harris is making, and has that been seconded?
Yeah.
Ms. Matheson.
Matheson's motion.
Okay, so that's, this, this will just get it on the agenda for action, and then the next step will be to vote on it and discuss it. So it's a two-step process.
So we did the first step. To get it.
Motion to suspend the rules. Then you vote on, on the second motion to untable. Purple sunshine. Make the motion to suspend the rule. Then you follow up with the second.
Okay, so the motion is right now to put this onto the agenda right now. And then the vote can take place. So it's an extra step as the result of the amendment made in August.
So do I have a motion to put this on the agenda?
I make that motion.
We did it.
We made the motion. Now we can call the roll. If everybody wants to.
Okay.
Please turn on your mic.
If we have an affirmative majority, then we'll go to the right, so the discussion and the vote on the actual action. So you're gonna call a roll?
I am.
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Santana.
Yes.
Mrs. Wilt.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
No.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Matheson. Ms. Noel Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Eight-one, the motion passes to add it to the agenda.
Okay, now we're gonna make a motion to actually move forward to our regular board meeting.
Correct.
Okay. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Wilt, second. Ms. Phoebe. Roll call.
Mrs. Wilt.
Do we not talk about it or?
Do you want to, do you want to take discussion on it, Ms. Conover?
Do we not talk about it?
Oh, okay. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes. Okay, so. Full transparency, right? I prefer to have material in front of me just to make sure that we know exactly what we're working on. So I don't like to make votes when I don't have the information presented in front of me. That's, that's all I have to say.
Any other discussion?
How long is the MO?
Go ahead, Patrick.
We're gonna see. Right, we're gonna see if we can find it quickly.
We, we have it up right here.
Okay.
Thank you. Wonderful.
So. Yes, please.
Memorandum of Understanding would extend through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So I know that we're working through some things with the United Way, so just in full transparency, would this then be added to whatever it is else that we're working on?
This would just be Ramos specifically, and then everything else we will talk about and discuss future meetings. But this is just for the services at Ramos because they were poised to begin this year, and then when it was tabled, it was quite disappointing to the students and their families. And the administration has been really working really hard to make the school a community school.
And we are sitting in our, if I may add, in our Committee of the Whole, so that means this is going to, this vote is to bring it to our regular board meeting, which is next week, which we have time to get the information, and if there's something that we're not interested in, we can definitely kill it then, if that's what the plan would be.
Okay.
Yep. Yes, and I did Sam, send an email about that. I was gonna put this on the board floor. I don't think I've put everything on there, but I know I did send it to the board about this. And thank you, Dr. Ross, for letting Dr. Ms. Brown see that.
So I guess one more question. I remember just back during that meeting, there was a conversation about us channeling or funneling some resources that we may be able to gain. What took place with that?
I'll actually let Dr. Ross, because we talked about this yesterday in more detail, so Dr. Ross, please.
Thank you, Dr. Burks. Yes, so Mr. Palmer, following the meeting at which the motion was, or the, the item was tabled, myself and, and Ms. Bryant met with the team at Ramos Elementary. the team at Ramos Elementary School and asked them questions about the the process that they had gone through over many years, what they were looking for in terms of that relationship and the outcomes. And then also what might be ways that we could, I'm going to say, close the gap between what they were looking for and what we could potentially offer. In in full honesty, what they're looking for is something that would be beyond the scope of what we could provide at this time based on all the things. So it's not just I know we've talked about this. It's not just like getting a community school coordinator who is a person, right? We could get a person in there, but then it's also all the other connections and partnerships that come through that relationship with the partner, the partner that the United Way is contracting with to get the to fund the services. So it's it's not just, you know, a person to come in and do the events. It's then the relationships with all the other pieces that they could bring to that table. The the flow through in terms of, you know, being able to run after-school events, to run summer events, to run family engagement events, to provide resources in terms of backpacks and and services and connections to healthcare. All of those pieces were items that they brought up as a need that they're experiencing at Ramos Elementary School.
And to my board, the only reason why I I'm going along with this is because of our students. I I can't stand United Way. Y'all know that. I just can't stand them. However, however, they're gonna be doing a hundred thousand dollar services for us, a hun- one hundred thousand dollars worth of services, and we're only gonna have to contribute seven hundred, seven thousand five hundred of them. If I thought, and it was explained to me, that we just don't have the services. We don't have it yet. So I will give this to them for now because we don't have it yet. And that's because that's and that school needs it. So that's the only reason why I'm asking for us to vote on that.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Is there any other, any further discussion? Can we have roll call?
Ms. Ms. Conover, point of order, because we added this to the agenda. There is a request for a public comment on this item.
Okay.
And yes, and it's appropriate to make a comment at this point.
Mr. Tim Ramos.
I just I thought I heard you answer it, actually. Did you say this program will be completely funded by the United Way?
Yes, so there there is a portion of seven, Ms. Ms. Harris mentioned it, seven thousand five hundred dollars that we provide each year as part of it, but the bulk of it comes through the United Way.
And in the following meeting, is that when you'll be providing the complete list of services they'll be providing, Ms. Harris?
Dr. Ross?
Yes, so as was the case previously in in January, the the entire agreement, the memorandum of understanding that lists all the services that will provided, the the term of the contract, the memorandum, all that will be included as part of the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. Can we have a roll call?
Sure. Mrs. Wilt.
Yep.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Matheson. Ms. Noel Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Dr. Santana.
Yes.
Nine-zero, motion passes to add this to the March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, is there any grass catches? They have a motion to adjourn. So moved. Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposes? This meeting is adjourned.
All right, so we're gonna go right into the business meeting. I'm sorry, to the building committee of a whole. Dr. Burks, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. Again, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Harris or Ms. Phoebe. Tonight, we have five action items on the building committee agenda. Those items include necessary repairs at the Robb Middle School Yard and the William Allen Parking Garage. We're also requesting approval for the domestic water service replacement at Moser Elementary School. These are two items that we bring before you annually, and those are our annual fire system testing and the approval for refuse and recycling services. Thank you.
Yes.
The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comments at the beginning of the immediate is limited to agenda items only. Is there any cards, Ms. Ms. Ramos?
We have no cards, Ms. Harris.
All right, then. Mr. Smith, can you go forward?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm requesting board approval to award bid for the Robb Middle School Courtyard Repairs to Ocean Construction LLC, eight-twenty-two Glassboro Road, Williamstown, New Jersey, oh-eight-zero-nine-four. This is for the amount of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars and a hundred and thirteen thousand and forty dollars. Two bids were submitted. Ocean Construction LLC was the lowest responsible bidder. The action request approval is subject to acceptable review by the district solicitor, and I recommend this item be considered as an action item at the regular board meeting on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. The work is scheduled to begin this summer and upon board approval.
May I have a motion to move this forward to the regular board meeting on Thursday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
It all right. Any discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Ms. Phoebe, do you want to do all in favor, or would you like me to?
Okay, oh, that's even better. All in favor? Let's get us out of here. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carried. Let's go to the next item. That's approval of the middle Robb Middle School Courtyard. Oh, sorry, it's the I'm sorry, it's the Allen High School Parking, correct?
Correct. Tonight, I'm requesting board approval to award bid for the William Allen High School Parking Garage Structural Repairs. This is phase three to D and M Construction Unlimited Incorporated, one oh-seven Turnpike Road, P O Box one thirty-two, Dalton, PA one eight four one four, for the amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. Five bids were submitted. D and M Construction Unlimited Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder. Again, this action request approval is subject to acceptable review by the district solicitor, and I recommend this item be considered as an action item at the regular board meeting on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. The work is scheduled to begin this summer and upon board approval.
All right, may I have a motion to move this forward to the regular board meeting on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three?
I make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carried to the next to the next board meeting. The next thing is our number three, item number three.
And I am requesting board of requesting the board of directors the approval of a PA CoStar state contract with Johnson Controls Fire Protection LP of six-three-three-zero Hedgewood Drive, Allentown, PA one eight one oh-six for the annual fire system testing and inspection services. The agreement provides for the annual testing and inspections of all fire systems and field devices such as pole station, smoke detectors, and strobes. This will provide safe buildings for students and staff and protect district assets. This will be funded by the facilities twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. This is a five-year agreement for the amount of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars annually. This action request has been reviewed by the district solicitor, and I recommend this item be considered as an action item with the regular board meeting on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
May I have a motion to move this to the regular board meeting on Thursday, March twenty-third?
So moved.
May I have a second?
It's been moved and seconded, Ms. Harris.
Okay, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Are you got? Please turn on your mics. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm feeling deja vu with this. What? Did we not do something like this previously, like a month ago?
This is a different contract. This is for this is actually for equipment testing.
Okay.
There's equipment. And then there's fire systems. These are the actual devices.
Okay, all right.
Not the fire system that
Yeah, all right.
Fire department.
Yeah, I was like, I feel like we did that. Okay.
Good memory. Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carried. Item number four, please.
And I am requesting board approval of a PA State PA CoStar State Contract with J. Ribnik Mechanical Contractor Incorporated, ten eighty-seven State Road, twenty thirty-five Nicholson, PA one eight four four six, for the domestic water service replacement at Moser Elementary School for the amount of three hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. This will provide safe, functional equipment and buildings for students and staff and protect district assets, and will be funded from the facilities twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. The agreement and insurance provisions have been reviewed and approved by the district solicitor and insurance advisors, and I recommend this item be considered as an action item at the regular scheduled board meeting on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
May I have a motion to move this to the regular board meeting?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion? So we already had all in favor. Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carried. Last last item.
And I requesting board approval to award bid for one year of refuse and recycling removal services to Waste Management of Pennsylvania Incorporated, twenty-seven-ten Golden Key Road, Kutztown, PA one nine five three zero, for the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, with an optional second year for the amount of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-two cents, and with an optional third year for the amount of four hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Three bids were submitted. Waste Management of Pennsylvania Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder. Action request approval is subject to acceptable review by the district solicitor, and I recommend this item be considered as an action for the regular board meeting on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
All right, may I have a motion to carry this to the next board meeting?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would like to bring to the board that Tom and I did speak about this one because that is the most that was the most expensive one. And we did talk about the bidding process and who was the highest bid and who were the lowest bids. We had some pretty high bids. And so that, you know, the motion, the the person that we went with, the company that we went with, gave us the best gave us the best price and also the best bargain for our money. So that's why we're bringing it forward to you because Tom did, Mr. Smith did do the research to make sure we have the best and the best for our money. He's being a good steward with our money and with what we have available. So I just wanted the board to know that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried to the next board meeting. Do we at this time, do we have any non-agenda items?
We have no public comment on non-agenda.
Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? I'm quick. May I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, go to the next one, meeting. Finance.
I'd like to call to order the finance committee of the whole meeting, the board of directors, school districts, the city of Allentown, March ninth, twenty twenty-three. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is you can hand your card over to Jen Reynos. She has her hand up right now. Comment cards are located on the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your remarks to three minutes. Superintendent, do you have any remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Tonight, we will open our meeting with a budget discussion led by Mr. Linderman and a little bit of me. This is not an action item, but will include a deeper dive into our revenue and expense budget. We will continue these discussions to provide further insight and transparency into our budget processes before we bring forward our proposed and final budget for official action in May and June. We will also move into other action items. Approval for an athletic purchase, be a weight room at Building Twenty-One, a settlement for an established trust, procurement cards, a contract approval for substitute services for school psychologists, and a contract for a new website service. I know people are like, yay. This is necessary item for the district as we continue to strive to enhance our communication tools.
Well, you can do. You can you can go from there if you want.
Oh, wait before. Are there any comment cards?
I do have a comment card. Tim Ramos.
This is what the comment card is for. It's for that.
Well, we know that the budget has always been an issue with the in in years past. There seems to not be anywhere that cuts can be made. And then I heard when I spoke previous superintendent, Dr. Stanford, the argument was show me where to make cuts and I'll make them. And I showed some, and they weren't certain people weren't happy about that. What I I know you're going into your your budget, and you're going to be making your presentation. I want to remind you to consider that the this board has increased taxes on the residents of Allentown for five straight years. Some members brushed it off that, well, at the last budget, I believe, it was only a hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We shouldn't be complaining about this. And I think that's a very cavalier attitude for individuals who don't have families, don't have children, don't have the responsibilities that about ninety-five percent of our community do. Easy to take that position. So just wanted to remind you guys, remember, our community has dealt with tax increases five consecutive years. And how much more can you get out of that stone? So.
Are there any other comment cards?
I have no other comment cards.
Okay, and so we have Mr. Linderman and our superintendent who will go over, and I just want to preface this by saying the same thing I say. Just want to say how disappointed I am. I thought the TV was here for the dynamic budget presentations that have been happening over the past couple of months, and I was worried about my good side over here and
Should have been.
All gone. I mean, sorry, next time, hopefully. But we are going to be doing this every month, and we are appreciating all the comments. Everyone continue to come out, and there might be something good in here this time that we would all love.
So, thank you, Mr. Palmer. Hopefully, the solicitor let me say this because I it's okay, but Mr. Palmer, I just want to acknowledge before we get into the budget presentation because it's we talk about academics and we're focused on improving academic outcomes. And I will be remiss tonight if I don't acknowledge someone who's leaving the district, who has really labored to ensure that we receive grants and early college opportunities for our students had a relentless focus on STEM. Now, I want to have Ms. Ramos come and join me in this conversation to highlight some of the exceptional work that has happened to help influence the our instructional corps here in the district.
Thank you, Dr. Burks. If you weren't aware, tonight is Dr. Brandy Sawyer's last meeting. She'll be parting ways and and going south to her hometown of North Carolina in the upcoming weeks. And if you didn't know, Dr. Sawyer, she's been in the district for about seventeen years. She taught at Allen High School. She was department chair at Deerife High School before she moved into a supervisor of instruction role at Robb Middle School. She was she spearheaded the Learning Dome, getting that up and running. Trying to be professional, call her Dr. Sawyer, but Brandy has been somebody that we've gone to to step in in many roles. If you recall, she was at Allen High School last year for more than half a year, supporting that that building while we searched for a principal. So I just think it's important that we acknowledge her work, her time here, her dedication, and wish her well as she's moving on to a promotion and to be closer to her family. So I just want to personally thank you, Dr. Sawyer, for all that you've done for us and wish you well.
So thank you for allowing us to do that, Mr. Palmer, because I know she wants to go home. But we thank you, Dr. Sawyer, in all sincerity, and you'll be sorely missed by this learning community, and thank you for all your service. Okay, tonight, we're just want to remind, we're not going to go through all the slides that I normally go through, but I want to ensure that But I want to ensure that when we think of the budget, that we're making mission centric decisions for the benefit of our children. So as an organization, as we mentioned, we have more than sixteen thousand, one hundred precious jewels that we are in service to. As well as twenty-one hundred adults who have been entrusted with their care. Somebody going to help me click, and I'll do the great job with the clicking. So additionally, tonight, we're going to provide you with a high leverage overview. Again, our goals are to ensure that we increase academic outcomes for our students. We're focusing on literacy, mathematics, opportunities to engage our families in this work. Tonight, we'll review our revenue, what our expenditures are, the cost drivers that are impacting our budget, as well as our proposed mileage rates. There's our mission and vision, so all the decisions we made based on a mission and vision. Our core values as an organization are, this year, we're focusing on a student-based, equity-based budget. Where students are the primary drivers of the decision-making that we are making on our budget and the budget process. So. I told you who our students were, our staff. You can see there the numbers that I stated really quickly to you. There are goals for the year, as I mentioned, increased graduation rates. We wanted to be very transparent about our budget timeline, so we, we were sharing with you where we are in the process. Tonight, we are presenting revenue. Previously, we had not presented our overall proposed, I think I'm going to tell you all about those details. Can you go back?
Yes, I know.
So I just want to review the timeline, as part of the timeline, we're going to continue to engage all stakeholders. We've met with almost all our schools thus far and reviewed their budgets with the principals. We looked at their data as well as we're going to fund their schools based on the data that's presented on academics as well as student discipline rates and such. In April, at the finance committee meeting, we, at this point, we know what the budget, what the governor's budget and allocation for revenue, for Allentown and its revenue. So Mr. Linderman is going to talk about that a little bit tonight. We will have additional budget meetings with our executive team. And so they're presenting their budgets for consideration. We're going to have community meetings. We're going to have community meetings that which we will engage the stakeholders in the, in the process. So at the school level, all principals were asked to meet with their school level teams, meaning parents. So if their PTO, PTSA, whatever the names that we're using here, because everyone has a different name. So their parent group and to share the budget and have them have some voice, voice in the decision-making. As well as have their parent leader sign off on the budget so that they are aware how the school is being funded. We will present preliminary budget by May. And we also will present the final budget for the board's consideration on June twenty-second. We will have a stakeholder meeting, so we will make those meetings public within about a week. And so you'll be able to have, ask us questions about funding and how we're utilizing the district's resources. I think this is where your strengths come in. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Again, we're going to talk about the revenue again. We've been talking about revenue for the past couple of months. We're going to talk about it again tonight. We'll look at the governor's budget. We haven't added anything to the, to the budget for the governor's budget because it's a little too early to tell what that budget may end up as. That, as you know, the, the governor's budget is, I call it the wish list. It's like when I was growing up and the Sears catalog came before Christmas. I marked every page that my mother would buy me and I don't think I ever got anything, but I was always happy, so it didn't matter. But, but anyway, that's his gov, that's his Sears robot catalog wishlist. So we'll talk a little bit, we're going to talk a little more about that in the, a few more slides. Again, I, I think I said this last month or the month before. This budget is, is a relatively painless budget, as you will see. Next year's budget, you're going to have some pain because you, you, you did get bailed out with these Esser monies for the past couple of years. And you're going to lose them all after next year. You'll have a little tiny bit for the summer of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year to deal with the summer programs. But after that, all the positions you've been funding with Esser will go away. So you'll have some real serious things to do next year this time. Okay, if I click and then count the three, it goes. So this is the total revenue pie. We've added the Esser money in here. And again, I'll talk about that in, in a little bit. So you see a big, the, the kind of yellowish golden rod chunk up there that is nine percent. Is, is Esser forty-one point two million, Esser three is actually a little bit bigger than that. But we're spending some money this year, we're carrying it over to a little bit twenty-one, twenty, or twenty-four, twenty-five. So we will continue that discussion. Did not update this at all. We've assumed no tax increase. I'll talk about that in a, in a second, too. The local revenues, we, we continued to monitor them. We haven't made any adjustments on them yet. Again, this is the state, state budget, the way it stands. And again, due to the uncertainty in the governor's proposal, we were, we haven't recommended adding any funds until the legislature flushes out all of the rhetoric that has to go on. You know, the, the peacock feather stuff and all that. And, and then eventually you'll get a budget and you probably won't know the budget until the end. We'll have to go with a good guess in June. Now, here's what the governor's budget has laid out for you. So there's, there's four areas that are in the governor's budget. There's basic education funding. And as you know, last year, we talked about this a couple of months ago. You actually got more than you budgeted this year. You budgeted a good chunk, you budgeted about twenty extra million this year. You ended up getting another about eighteen million on top of that between basic ed and special ed. The current governor's budget is about a fourteen million dollar increase in your basic education funding. That, that is the, I believe, the third or fourth largest amount in the budget for school districts. I think it's Pittsburgh and Philadelphia and Reading and then you. So in dollar amounts, percentage wise, we, we still have to flush that out a little bit. The governor's budget was just released on Tuesday. So we're, we're waiting to get some kind of the devil in the detail numbers behind it. So when we get that, we will let you know and have an update for you for next month. So special ed funding is up again, that, that was a pretty good surprise, too. Because for the past many years before this current year and, and next year, special ed funding has been increasing a ridiculously small amount of money. The ready-to-learn block rant stayed stagnant again this year, so that, there was no increase in that, but it is still listed. He does have a new line item in there for school-based mental health services and we will have to deal with that. So Allentown has allocated three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in a school district of sixteen thousand, one hundred and some kids. Doesn't do a lot, but at least it's something. One thing that is not included in the budget and we looked at it is, is any additional funding for new building projects. That is a devastating blow to your building program. It is millions and millions of dollars that the, the state has taken off the table. So just, just to let you know, when you were getting some of those estimates early on in some of your building projects, they would give you what's called a, a net debt. Which means when you build a building, the state reimburses you. And for Allentown, it's a pretty high percentage. So you know, if you had a hundred million dollar project, it's in the tens of twenty million dollars. That is not been funded for many years and it is still not in the budget. So again, that's, that's going to have a major impact on what you can do now and in the future. Okay, this is the federal money with the Esser money in there. So the, the number went up to sixty-two million with the, with the forty-two million dollar, or forty-one million dollar addition of, of Esser money. Now I want to talk a little bit about the Esser. Okay. This is, this is Esser three. You, you actually got eighty-eight million, the, again, the fourth largest amount in, in the, in this, in the state behind Philly, Reading and Pittsburgh. Eighty-eight million for Esser three. This is how it's allocated. We do have a little bit remaining that we have to reallocate, so that, that will be discussed in the, in the future. We have done some expenditures. I mean, you, I commend you for putting a big chunk of this money, better than half of it into your facilities. Because the more you put into staffing, the more pain you would have had in twenty-four, twenty-five. You're already going to have pain in twenty-four, twenty-five because there's a lot of staff members that are being funded through Esser that you're going to have to either find a way to keep them somehow or worse, so. And, and you have over two hundred staff members that are being funded by Esser right now. So just, just a thought for the back of your head. So some of the twenty-two, twenty-three expenditures are in there. So that's why it doesn't actually come out to eighty-eight million budgeted for next year. It's really forty-one. And there really is that million dollars for that summer program that carries over to the last, to the, the summer of twenty-four. This is a page very similar to what you've seen in, in prior. I'm not going to go over too much. We did add the Esser money to it. These are the expenditures and I will, I'm going to, it's better to explain it in the, in the pie that's next, but this, this includes. So your total expenditure budget's four hundred and fifty-two million. That's, that's what your budget is. It is inflated this year because of the Esser money, the, the big Esser chunk. It's a fourteen percent increase in expenditures. When you include Esser, if you remove the Esser money, it's only about a four percent increase in expenditures. Okay, all right, here's, this is, this is a pie and, you know, there's various slices of pie. Thanksgiving, I would take the biggest piece and eat it. My wife would take that little teeny weeny sliver that you could hardly see. But anyway, so the three largest areas are salary benefits and charter schools. Makes up seventy-five percent of your budget. And I'm going to talk about charter schools in a minute because you have a little issue with them right now escalating with, with costs. I highlighted, it's, so the, the, the kind of golden rod salmon, whatever color those are, they're the biggest chunks. I highlighted the purchase services and that's, that's mostly Tom's area with what he's spending in Esser for, for the HBAC stuff. So I just wanted to, if you want to know where most of the Esser money is, it's not all in there. Because obviously some of it's in salaries and some of it's in other places, but that's, that's why that is a little bit higher. Want to talk about charter school tuition rates? So twenty-one, twenty-two, your tuition rate was ten million, or ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars for a regular education student and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six for, for a special ed student. This year, it came down a little, it was actually a little bit higher. Mr. Fazian and I did a little audit of the, the PD three sixty-three, found a, a couple of things that we had to adjust. So it, it's going to save you about between a hundred and forty and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the year on that. But it, your, your number went down a little bit this year. Next year's number, you'll see goes up. What I would consider pretty significantly for you. Some of the keys for that are your, your enrollment numbers are going down, not dramatically. But they are, you're, you're what they call ADMs, it's your average daily membership. So the, it's the number of kids that are on average counted in your schools every day. So if you had a, the tuition rate for charter schools is calculated by a, a total number in your budget, and it's just not the whole budget, but just for sake of example, it's a total number. So say it's a thousand dollars. And if your ADMs are a hundred, or if you have, if you have ten ADMs on a thousand dollars, your tuition rate would be a hundred dollars a student. Now imagine if your expenditures stay the same to the next year, a thousand dollars, but your ADMs go down to nine and a half. Now your tuition rate is a hundred and five dollars. So you're going up in students and you're going up in tuition rate because your, your, your ADMs are lower. And actually, that twenty-three, twenty-four number is an estimate. Our guess is it will probably go up when we get the final average daily memberships for the current year. Twenty-three, twenty-four is based on the twenty-two, twenty-three budget and the twenty-two, twenty-three average daily membership. So what does that mean? Okay, this is your charter school annual tuition cost. Currently, your budget is about sixty-three million, what it is sixty-three million, two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and seventy. We're estimating based on your number of students right now, you're going to spend sixty-five million, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars or sixty-five million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. So you're going to be about two and a half million over budget in this category. Next year, if we just use the same number of students we have right now, your budget has to go to seventy million, five hundred thousand, which is about a seven million dollar increase, a little over seven million dollars. We are working on a projection model to calculate how many students, because our guesses is going to be higher based on your trend. And we want to, we want to use the same methodology for projecting these students as we use, as is used by your enrollment projection model, which is a, a survival cohort survival method of, of students. So right now, you had forty-nine hundred and ninety-nine, ninety students in, in charter schools, just under five thousand. Just to kind of put that into some dollars for you. Sixty-eight point seven percent of your tax bill goes to pay for charter school costs. So sixty-eight point seven percent of your tax bill. And that doesn't even count, it's probably actually higher because there are separate costs for transportation that we haven't factored in. So again, next month, we will have a better number for estimate for, for the, your charter school enrollment and a, and a probably a better, well, a more accurate number, it'll be a worse number for you for charter school budget. So what does that mean total for the budget? So here we are. Your revenues are four hundred and fifty-two million, your expenses are four hundred and fifty-two million. So right now, we're at zero, remember? We haven't, we haven't, I'm going to talk about, it's balanced at this point, but there's some things that, that have to be addressed. There's some positive things and there's some potentially, there's some additions to expenditures that have to possibly be added. But there's also some additions to revenue that, that will probably need to be added as we talked about the, the governor's budget, so to speak. I used this chart last month, it's our fund balance. We're still waiting on the twenty-one, twenty-two fund balance. A, a, a healthy school district as described by Moody's Credit Agency is, is, is a school district with about an eight percent unassigned fund balance. And what does unassigned mean? It means it's not assigned. It means it's, normally you have a fund balance and you have some assignments, you have some commitments, there are legal liabilities, there are long-term liabilities and things like that. You have not been able to do any of those liabilities because an unassigned fund balance for, for Allentown should be in the thirty-two to thirty-five million dollar range. Sounds like a lot of money, but you, you, you have a lot of people, you have a lot of buildings, you have a lot of expenses. Eight percent is less than a month's expenditures if you, if everything was equal over a year. And it's not for schools, so you know, in fairness, but eight point three percent is what, you know, one month of expenditures equals. And that's why Moody's keys in on their rating agency on, on, you know, you, you should have at least a month's worth of expenses that, that you can go to. In the, in the, it hasn't happened in a while, but in my tenure as a business manager, I've seen it happen where the, the state budget is not passed until late, until mid, late July, even August. You guys, that's devastating for you because they freeze your subsidy without an authorization by the legislature. There is no way to free up subsidy to give the schools and that would, that would kill you guys. So that's, again, I'm just trying to emphasize why a reserve is, is important. And why if somebody says thirty-two million is way too high, thirty-two million is way too high if your budget is ten million. Thirty-two million is not too high when your budget's four hundred and fifty million. Now. I wrote stuff down, I wanted to make sure. Anyway, the committed and assignments usually make up about fifty or sixty percent of your fund balance. We have had none the past several years because you haven't had enough fund balance to do it. So to be in line with, with generally accepted accounting principles, you've really got to start doing that right or your, your books are not reflected correctly. Now, let's talk about the proposed mileage. the proposed millage. Now, I understand there was some word on the street that Mr. Fazio and I were talking about a tax increase. We never said tax increase ever, ever. I never did. I never say that because it's not my job to say tax increase. I never said tax increase. And in fact, if you look at this slide, we are presenting a no tax increase for you right now. Now. So contrary to popular belief, there was never a tax increase mentioned unless one of you guys mentioned it and Mr. Fazi and I didn't hear it. So.
It was the previous guy.
And my wife says I'm hard of hearing. So it could be that I didn't hear you, but no tax increase. Read my lips. No, that was. Never mind. Sorry. Um, so couple of things that you got to think about in here, and we're going to deal with this next month. And Dr. Burks, I mean, this, Mr. Fazio and I have done kind of this part of the work. The harder part of the work is now in the hands of like these guys. There is, new staffing is not included and needs to be addressed in this budget. Now, what does that mean? Well, there's been, we've had budget meetings and there's been a lot of new staffing requests. Uh, we've also looked at different buildings and different staffing levels and buildings and, and how your enrollment has been stagnant and, and declining maybe even a little bit and how your staffing levels in some places may actually be over. So there may need, need to be some adjustments made to that. So, uh, sour, we have budgeted salaries in there, but we have a budgeted salary and overall budgeted salary increase of about two percent. That doesn't mean it's a two percent pay increase, but it's overall is about two percent, and that's assuming some attrition and things like that. If the benefit costs go up more than what we've gotten on the preliminary projections from the, uh, consultants, we, we would have to, to deal with that. Uh, you know, if you listen to me two slides ago, the charter school enrollment seems to be rising like daily. Uh, and may require a further budget adjustment. I, you know, so I don't want to see you stuck where you don't have enough money budgeted for it. So um, that and we are monitoring some of the revenues. We know some of our revenues are probably a little uh, conservative right now. So we probably have some room. The governor's budget, we have nothing in there. You know, you see it's, it's, um, sixteen, seventeen million. I, I have to go back, but some of that's going to be in there. Will, will it be that total amount? Well, I hope so. I kind of doubt it. It never usually ends up at the governor's budget. There's always usually a compromise. Um, my guess is it'll be north of eight or ten million additional for you at least. Hopefully. And again, last year you listened to like Pasbo put out a model. Uh, and, and I know that Harry used it, um, to fudge it and, and it was pretty good. It, it, it modeled what the, what the, uh, what they thought was going to be added to the basic education funding formula and what was going to be added to there and use that. And, uh, actually they came in a little higher. So that was, that was good. Don't think that's going to happen um, for this year. Because they also have some things down the road to worry about too. So, okay, I guess I'm done. Now, the next slide was, oh, there I am. Sorry. I got the longest drive home. All right, this slide, we did not update it. It's the, the, your millage increase is to be determined. I would put zero up there because right now, uh, we're, we're at zero. Uh, and, and really, I, I agree with, uh, in looking at, you, you've had some pretty tough times with, for your taxpayers. So uh, sometimes it's hard. I mean, everybody wants, everybody wants to add things. Everyone wants to add things and nobody wants to, to deal with uh, the, the fact that you really need to kind of take a step back and, and, and look at your, your average taxpayers who, who are, are doing stuff for you and not complaining too much. Okay, I'm not going to do this. Dr. Burks talked about this. Uh, we will, we, you, you see what we're going to be doing over the next couple months. That's the budget. Real quick. Any questions?
Absolutely.
That I'm going to want to answer.
Well, um, so I'm happy to see that there is no proposed tax increase. Um, however, I would like to know what has happened because I remember we had a presentation and it is not from you. Previously indicating that we needed to increase taxes over the next five years in increments. So I'm curious to see exactly what has changed. If you could answer that because you were not here. It was before you.
I, I did see those, those presentations and I believe PFM did those. And I, I believe they were looking, you, you really, one of the things you have to, to think about too is we have put a little bit of money in here for some, some additional debt. Not enough to cover your big project that you're, you, you were looking at the middle school project. Uh, because we were thinking there was going to be extra money coming or the, that the, what they call plan con, the, the reimbursement for, for construction that the state has always had was in there. So part of it was, they were fun, that they were saying you have to continue. You, you do have some issues. You have some really big facilities issues. And, and you can't just say, well, they're not giving us any money. You got to forget it. You're going to have to address that head on. But, you know, let's address it with our eyes open and, and know it's going to cost you money and let's make sure you're doing the right thing at the right time for the right people. Then the right people are the right little people. So, that and, you know, the, the economy has gotten a little bit better. I mean, we've had some increases in things like our investment revenue. I mean, we went from a three hundred thousand dollar budget and that it's almost two million now. It may be significantly higher than that before we're done with it. You did get a bigger than expected increase from the state last year that, that really kind of helped you. You still have the Esser issue that is coming. So, um, and, and quite frankly, your budget is based on, you know, two hundred and sixty-five million of your four hundred and some million dollar budget is from the state. So, you know, even a s- six percent increase in taxes, and I am not promoting that. I'm just giving you an example. It is only six million dollars. You know, it's not, you, you know, you, you go to a school that is less reliant on state aid and a budget like this might have three hundred million dollars coming from local property taxes. So now all of a sudden you'll need a two percent tax increase to get six million dollars where you need a lot bigger tax increase. So you can't fund a lot of things on the backs of your taxpayers because you do not, you, you are a lot more reliant on the state. Uh, you get a lot of federal money too. So, um, it's going to be a lot of, I mean, the, the, I, I, I don't envy her as the new superintendent here. She's going to have a relatively nice year with the budget this year, but next year it's going to be nasty. You'd be yelling at her.
I don't yell at people.
You'd be yelling at whoever was there, but you're going to be yelling at her now. So.
But thank you. I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify that information because we receive total different information. So it's good to have some clarity and I guess in a sense some good news. So thank you.
There we go. Okay, now. Because I'm a rebel, I put all the action items on one page for, for here. And I will attempt to go through them as, uh, and I'll ask Mr. Palmer, can I just go through them all or?
I would actually leave that up to the board, um, if you would like him to just, since he has them all on one page, I believe we have to vote on that though first, correct? I mean, to be able to go through everything at once.
I'll do them one at a time.
Oh, well then go for it.
Okay. So you have, you have, uh, five action items, even though it's four point two to four point six because four point one was a non-action item. That was the budget. You have, uh, weight room equipment at building twenty-one. That is, uh, uh, I was understanding an Esser funded project. So, uh, you have the explanation of it in your packet. Uh, we have, uh, been, been approached by the L M Bush Trust. There's a special needs trust that, uh, originally was written in New Hampshire. Is now moving to Pennsylvania and they need us, the Allentown School District to be added as a trustee for the, for the child. The money goes from the one to the, to the sibling. And then if there's any money left over at the very end, you get it. And that's probably long after you were all gone, but uh, uh, Mr., yeah. Uh, Mr. Sultanics, uh, firm has been through all this with, with Mr. Fazio, actually kind of spearheaded this one. So we're recommending that. We did a pretty long presentation on the procurement cards last month. So again, we already, you already have credit cards in place here. These ones are better. They have better internal controls. They create a better audit trail. We want to eliminate the petty cash at the schools. It is, it's not a lot of money, but it's cash. You know, it's something you never want to deal with, you know, in, 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 you know, we got rid of cash where Mr. Fazio and I came from like twenty years ago. So cash is bad. It will streamline the purchase process in this one because it's actually sponsored and, and was actually developed and sponsored by the school boards association, the business managers association and the superintendents association. Um, they've got a little, they worked the thing with the, the bank that issues these cards and it generates some revenue for you. So right now you're already doing a lot of stuff with your credit cards. This will now generate probably, I know we said last month seventy-five to a hundred thousand, but Mr. Fazi and I are changing that to probably a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand a year because you're already, you're already doing it. So, uh, that's the procurement card. The health solutions contract is for specialized subs for speech, psychology, nurse, nurses. Uh, and that was going to come out of the general fund. And as Dr. Burke said, the, uh, uh, website, which desperately needs, and I never knew. And so Melissa told me our website's not A B A accessible for something right now, but
It's not anyone.
I'm not walking into the website, but I, 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 I just, but, uh, so, so, uh, I will not take any questions on anything but four point four because I'll defer the rest of them to the audience, to the people in the audience that, that have them.
Does anyone, um, wait up? All in favor of moving all of these items forward? Um, can I have a motion to move? Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any questions on all of the items? All in favor?
Hi.
All right. All these items move forward to the next, uh, board meeting on March twenty-third. Uh, do we have any? Want to make sure. Do you have any old business? Do we have any new business? Any public comments or any non-agenda items?
No public comments.
All right, uh. So do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move.
My wife's going to be happiest.